Please rise. Approaching meetings.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call shows everyone's here. Approval of the minutes of August 22nd, 2016. Does anybody have anything?
The very first page, I had told them these about it already, but it's nth degree, not tenth degree in the fourth line of the page. That's all I got. Tim had, everybody got the email, Tim had some suggestions that I make a motion that we accept, or that we approve the minutes as amended by Tim and my suggestion.
Mr. Mayor. If I may, Tim, I would prefer that those corrections be read out to the public so it's available to everybody to know exactly what we're approving right now.
It's fine. One was, I forget the page numbers, but there was a reference to the hourly rate under the retainer, referenced the 180 per hour. It's 135. And then Pat Hazeltine's name was misspelled. Then the other issue we can deal with in the agenda.
What was the last one, I'm sorry?
The other issue is just the, we can deal with through the agenda, the poverty exemption matter.
Yeah, I'd just like to add a comment. I think it's important that if you're going to make any amendments to the minutes, that rather, I mean, it's okay if you want to put them in an email and send them out to people, but the whole point of the Open Meetings Act is to let the public know what is being amended. So I think you need to get those changes on the record so that the public has an opportunity to understand what's being changed in the minutes. So, thank you, Tim, for getting those points on the record in a public meeting. Thank you.
Anything else? Do a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the bills?
Don't have anything.
Question for Lynn. Are all of the bills in from Plant Moran, or are we still going to be receiving some more?
I believe they're all in, but I would have to ask Lori. They will be doing their final audit presentation at the October 10 meeting. So there may still be one.
I just noticed that they were interspersed throughout the bills because they're being billed to different departments for their share. But I had to add them up to see where we were at. I'm just questioning whether we're about done paying, or if there's more coming.
I believe we're about done paying. They've had the draft audit meeting, and they just have their audit presentation on the 10th of October.
All right, thank you.
Question? I had a question. I was curious about, it's on page three, it's regarding debt and interest. It's 1,011. Could you sort of chat a little bit on that? I assume it's a bond payment, or is it a?
That is a DWRF loan, and that is debt and interest payment on that for August.
Okay, so that would.
So that's the water project that we did in 2014.
Okay. Also on page seven at the top, it's Hubble Roth site plan fees of $1,081. I know you're working really, really hard to recoup fees and get those, and I think that's a great effort on your part. Is this by any chance one of those fees that sort of slipped through that we could recoup? Or?
We actually pay them first, and then we recoup them.
You recoup?
Yes.
All right, great. And then down at the bottom on that same page, I see where there's witness fees for Kristen Kennedy and Stanford Langworthy. What were the witness fees for?
That would be a question for either Chief Collins or the city attorney.
Witness fees?
I would have to check. I am not aware of any of them, but I can certainly check.
Yeah.
I can also speak to that. The police department typically authorizes both either full day or half day witness fee for citizens that appear on the behalf of the city or police department to testify in 52nd District Court. And they also get mileage on those. Usually they're very low amounts.
Okay, no, I understand the witness fee thing. So these are cases for, that are active with the police department in which charges have been brought. And so you have witnesses to that.
That's correct. I'm not specifically familiar with these names, but in the last few weeks I have authorized a couple of payments of low amount witness fees.
Okay, thank you.
Page one, the return, the reimbursement for the inflatable movie screen from Canton. That's, was the failing at the last showing?
No, we had it for the last showing, but.
Okay. I thought you had, it was just canceled for the weather?
Yes, it was.
All right. You had made mention that you had concerns because there was, I thought it was with the projector, actually.
There was, but that was the showing before this one. And we still showed that one that night. We just had some issues with it, and we had to bring our own VHS. I'm sorry. My HDV player.
Beta Macs.
Okay, so the reimbursement is for what, a repair on the screen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And that is split between, I believe, the five communities that are involved in.
Okay. And Chief Kennedy, there's on page two of seven, emergency services, one year subscription to I am Responding.
Yep, that's a scheduling app that we use. It also has a pretty neat feature where our staff can actually check in while they're responding, so when we have a call, myself or any of the other officers can check to see how many staff we have responding actually while we're in route, so.
Okay, that's real time, then? Yeah.
Correct, so that's what it's for.
Is this the, is this new, or is this just a subscription?
This is the fourth year we've had it. So, yeah, it's been a great tool for us, so.
All right, thank you. That's all I had.
Anyone else? I'll move the bills. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the agenda.
Tim, do you want to handle that?
Yes, in going through the minutes, I noticed that the motion regarding the resolution to establish the policy and guidelines and approve the application for poverty exemptions was to postpone our table directly to this meeting specifically. I have prepared a revised policy and application, and in dealing with Oakland County Equalization, who is our assessor, they need some more time in order to review and get me substantive comments back if they have any, and then we'll bring that back. During that conversation with OCE, Ms. Kadosian indicated that the policy and guidelines that are in place for 2016 have to remain so, so the earliest this could become effective would be 2017. So there's no urgency on this. I'll bring it back. You can decide whether you want to postpone it to a specific date, or allow me to bring it back when it's ready.
Well, let's stay on this, because this is kind of, you know, near and during my heart, and I knew that you couldn't have it for this year because 2016 was already taken care of. So, and that starts in December, because you have your next Board of Review is in December. So the earliest this would be used would be March. You need to make an appointment to Board of Review in January, so it's probably best to have this done by the end of the year, you know, for sure. But, you know, let's not wait till the last minute. I was kind of hoping that we'd be on a timeline to move this through so that by 2017 it'd be ready to go.
Yeah, my part's ready. I didn't give OCE a ton of time, so they wanted time to review it. I didn't even get an impression of whether they, they didn't have enough time to even really tell me whether they had problems with it. So I don't think this should be a long turnaround, and I don't see any reason to delay other than to allow OCE to provide its input.
So what do you need, just a motion to extend it indefinitely?
Yeah, a motion to table would be fine.
I make a motion to.
It needs to go on the agenda first.
Oh, on the agenda first, okay.
It needs to go on the agenda under Old Business, because that's where we postponed it to at our last meeting.
All right, then. I move that we put on the agenda under Old Business the issue pertaining to the Board of Review form and the resolution policy for further consideration.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll move the agenda as amended.
Discussion? Thank you. Just, I point this out every time we have a closed session, and I'll continue to. One of the things in the past is we had a lot of closed session meetings that, in my opinion, were not needed. Many instances when we made decisions, but we didn't come out of the closed session and put it on the record. So going forward, we need to make sure we're doing our due diligence in that. But just want to say, for today, absolutely a closed session's warranted because it's part of the Open Meetings Act, per the request of an employee, Ms. Ladner. So in this instance, closed session is warranted tonight, so for that, I have no issues. Thank you.
Motion, support? All in favor?
Aye.
Public comment? Anything not on the agenda, like to speak? Your name, address. Carl?
Carl Richards, 390 Lennox. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I wanted to call your attention to a few things since the last council meeting, probably take about six minutes, maybe a little more. First off, I'd like to make sure it goes on the record that we had a great depot day, okay, this past Saturday, and a lot of us worked for the previous two weeks, weather permitting, to get ready for it. And the final coordination of the things at the end, our DPW helped out immensely with final preparations and cleanup, and they helped, they got, after hours, our number two man came over and got the trash cans and blasted them out at the power wash. We couldn't have done that. And it worked out beautiful in the preparation phases. Also, our opening ceremonies with the bagpipes were something really unique, best I've ever seen. I've never seen it like that. It was really, really touching, moving, and incorporating the memorial for the 911 event, okay? And the memorial for Mr. Brown and the late Mrs. Eleanor Donnelly, some, someone who I didn't know myself personally. Anyway, I want to thank all parties involved with that. I wanted to move on to some other notable things. Our ice rink project is completed, for the most part. There's probably some border trim things that need to go on, but this, it's on the end of the main street where we're on right now, okay? Right down there at Warren, okay? This sort of goes along with part of my philosophy. You spend a few bucks more upfront, and it's costly, you save three times or more money down the road in the future, in adaptability and uses for that parking lot. It'll be an ice rink in combination, a lot of things. We could have a tent on there and have a celebration or something, you know, in the future. There's a lot of things. Anyway, I'm just making sure you're aware that the job's roughly completed, and they did a beautiful job. Okay. In the community, we've had some asphalt improvement around town that you all should be aware of. Out to Powerhouse Jim, now that's just in back of McDonald's, more or less, out there. They've put in over 100,000 square feet of new asphalt, inch and a half cap over the present parking lot. And I'm sure Powerhouse Jim didn't pay for it, but probably the holding company, I thought it was Betzak, but it may not be anymore, probably paid for that. But that's a big load of brand-new asphalt, plus lines. Okay, also, Mr. Brown at the Browns Root Beer, he's put in about 3,000 square feet of asphalt, brand-new, plus lines yesterday being Sunday, okay? And with the seal coating by Maul's Services. All in preparation for his party, which he's throwing for the city on the 24th. Maybe you've seen these flyers? A "Thank You" party for the City of South Lyon by Browns Root Beer. Okay. Also, gotta mention the trailer park, South Lion Woods, being the correct name. They've put in another 14,000 square feet of asphalt in the last two weeks in that place, plus I believe they've achieved their goal of 25 new trailers to be put in there, and some of them are renting out. But anyway, that's just letting you know, timeline, they're progressing with their improvements, which we talked about earlier in the year and last year, too. Anyway, I thought you'd like to know some of those updates and good things to know about what's going on in town. Thank you, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Anyone else? We have the formal presentation of Maddy Doty Field and the naming and proclamation. I'd like to have Glenn and Tom maybe come up.
No, no, you got it. Thank you. Where is Maddy Doty? She died in the City of South Lyon from her birth on April 15, 2002, until her passing on 15th day of May 2016. Where has Maddy Doty received several awards, including honor roll and probation choir award? Maddy is known for her free spirit, determination, and hard work ethic. Now therefore, I, John Dallas Jr., Mayor of the City of South Lyon, on behalf of the city council and the entire community, do hereby dedicate baseball field number one of the Caddy Park in honor of Miss Maddy Doty. Thank you very much.
I don't know if you guys would like to say anything?
I had to prepare myself this time. This is a very humbling moment for us, and we can't begin to tell you how grateful we are. We are truly blessed to live in this community, as I told you guys last time. Since Maddy passed, we have literally and figuratively been embraced by our family, friends, and this city. People who didn't even know Maddy, but maybe who knew us, and some of them really just by name, they knew us, have made tremendous gestures of support to us, and they did immediately. The week after Maddy passed, yellow ribbons for Maddy on the streets of South Lyon, placed by people we didn't know. Yellow ribbons worn in the hair of the softball teams at the high schools and on the helmets of the boys' travel baseball teams. The releasing of balloons in Maddy's honor at the East softball game that week. The eighth grade students at Millennium posing in the shape of a 100-foot ribbon outside of the school. Children holding a bake sale in their subdivision to help raise money, to help us with expenses. This year, hockey teams at Kensington Valley will be wearing patches on their jerseys, yellow patches with her name and her number, and it's truly been overwhelming. We will never forget how this community has supported us in this time. But honors such as the one we're receiving today are truly special in that they ensure that Maddy will never be forgotten. As her parents, that's the greatest fear you have. But these are often reserved for people who've done great things, people who have lived long lives of service to their communities or for their country. And Maddy didn't have a chance to do those great things for her community, obviously, passing at 14. But somehow in her passing, she's helped us all to see how great this community can be. And I believe dedicating this field to Maddy's memory serves as a greater reminder of how wonderful this city and its people can be. You guys have helped show that. This dedication belongs as much to the people of South Lyon as it does to us. Thank you very much.
Just read it.
Old Business? All right, Old Business. Poverty Exemption, motion to.
I'll move to table it.
I'll support it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Tim, do you have any concrete feeling at all about when you think it might, they might be? Already?
I communicated with them on Wednesday and Thursday of last week, prior to the packet deadline. I'll follow up with them this week, and we'll get a better idea.
Did you also have an opportunity to do any of the research?
Yes.
Yeah, regarding just the examples given, I don't know if they're pertinent, relevant, whether they can be integrated with our policies or not?
Yes, I found the Schwartz Creek.
Schwartz Creek, yeah.
I also looked at some of the neighboring communities. I also found the tax bulletin that I think you referred to regarding the reverse mortgage issue. I went back and looked at the State Tax Commission forms, which start, which was the starting point for Stephanie, and I've tried to accommodate and make all the changes that are appropriate. There's some, there's some bigger policy questions that I think are giving OCE some pause. For example, if you want to limit the eligibility for the poverty exemption to three years in consecutive years, or if you want to put some type of cap for eligibility and limit it by SEV for the property, those are larger policy questions that I think we're going to need to bring, get together as, with the administration, maybe bring those back, or at least get some input from council on what you're interested in, what you really want to accomplish through the poverty exemption guidelines and policy.
Well, it's clear to me that, you know, since I've been working on this, is that there were issues that, when I reviewed the minutes, that some of these policy issues never even came before council. So this is actually a good time to take a look at what other communities are doing with respect to the poverty exemption, whether that particular criteria fits our community, the standards that we're interested in. I'm not so concerned, I don't, I'm not advocating for any of them. I think my broader issue is, is that we're being inclusive in our information so that when we make the decision, we've got everything there at the table. I mean, I was very surprised to find some of those areas, and I went back into minutes and could not find where the city had even discussed or even thought about some of these exemptions, and other communities had. So this is meant more to be more of an instructional kind of process rather than anything. I'm not advocating anything at all, but I like to have as much information available to me at the time when we make the decision on the policies.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, the motion before us is to table, that's a non-debatable motion.
We're not debating.
Call for the vote.
Pardon?
I'd call for the vote.
Vote for what?
To table.
Oh, well, I'm discussing, so.
This is a non-debatable motion.
Well, I'm debating it, so. I've said what I need to say.
Call for the vote. Is there a motion?
I made the motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank you, okay.
But historically, we do have further discussion after, correct?
Not a motion to table.
Not a motion to table.
Yeah, I think you have.
I'd like, I'll check into that, okay?
So do I.
New Business, purchase of 2017 Ford F-350 Series truck and utility box.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm requesting permission from the council to move forward on this. We feel it's time to replenish some of our equipment within the Water and Wastewater Department, and it begins with the purchase of this vehicle. This vehicle is used as our everyday water meter truck. It's on the road seven days a week. The existing vehicle's a 2007, but the utility box on the back end of it is 16 years old. The existing truck has transmission problems, just wore out. So we've done our homework. Doug Bures and Ron Beeson worked very hard, and at the time of budget, we put $47,000 in thinking that would cover the work, and these guys worked very hard getting quotes, and lo and behold, Varsity Ford came in with the lowest price, and that price would then $35,766 for the truck, and then $87, 59.70 for the utility box that goes on the back end of that, and for a total price, I'd say, the initial price was $27,006 for the truck, so the total price is $35,766. And when you subtract that from what we budgeted for, we're actually $11,234 less than what was in the line item under capital opway, and I'm requesting at this time that we can move forward on this purchase.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Bob, I have a quick question, or actually a couple. Is this a pre-owned vehicle, or is this a new truck that we're getting?
New.
Brand-new, okay. And also, with the old truck, are you planning on keeping that one just as like a backup, or are we going to recycle that and donate it?
I was going to talk to the DPW and see if we could outfit it for, let's say, water main breaks and stuff like that.
Okay.
But we feel we're pretty well outfitted in that department, and so what we will do is put this out on my deals, and that'll go off for auction, and whatever money that we get back will be turned over to the city.
Okay, great, thanks.
Sam? What are you going to do with the other $11,000?
Hopefully not spend it.
You usually have a plan kind of back in your mind.
Me?
Sandbagging?
That's all I have.
Yeah, I was just going to comment and say, once again, I really liked the way that you detailed that this is actually in the 216, 217 fiscal year budget. And yes, you only have about $11,000 left, and I just wanted to say, I'm going to be a little bit hesitant to approve anything beyond the budget, so I just sort of want to let you know. So if anything comes up this year that is over $11,000, I'm just sort of letting you know, unless this is an emergency, I'm, I think I'm going to be a little hesitant to amend the budget this year. I want to stick with it. I'm just letting you know, I think it's only fair.
I will say this, though.
But if it's an emergency, it's different.
Yeah, I have money budgeted for a superintendent vehicle. I am driving a hand-me-down city vehicle now, and there's money within the budget now to address that. And to be truthful, I was going to take it to council at some point, that the city would give me permission. I think I could probably search out a used vehicle and save quite a bit from that $22,000 that we set aside for that vehicle, but that's for another discussion at a later time, so I'll bring that to the table prior to doing anything. So going back, I was requesting the purchase of this vehicle from Varsity Ford tonight for a total of $35,766.
Yep, you just answered my question.
Joe? So, Bob, I want to say thank you. I think this is good work. I'm looking at the base price of the truck, and it says twenty-seven thousand. Then on the next page is thirty, thirty...
Was it three different bids, Joe?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right, right, and they vary, so I was going to say, I'm glad that you guys did your due diligence, and definitely got a good deal in the terms of trucks. So I did have a question regarding the, the equipment. Now, I mean, I can look up the MSRP costs and know that you got a good deal, but where did this come? In the market, how much does this equipment cost typically? I mean, is this...
You're talking about for like the Napa hide box?
Yes, yes.
Well, I, I don't know, I mean, this is the price they gave me, eighty-seven, fifty-eight. So, I mean, that's not some, I can't go to multiple retailers on that, so I just go with that price that they give us, okay?
Yep.
But I definitely do search out the price of the truck, because there are multiple dealers on that, okay?
Okay, so I'm just...
I don't know if I answered your question.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to look for it and see if you did any negotiation, if there was, try to get some reductions, or what the case was.
I didn't.
Okay.
At least on the box I didn't, but on the, the truck itself, yeah. Doug Bures, our city mechanic, worked really hard at negotiating this price down. In fact, we met with a gentleman from Varsity Ford, who continuously, continuously comes in lower than other car manufacturers.
Right.
We deal with this gentleman quite often.
Okay, yeah, I mean, and the reason why, I'm not trying to give you a hard time, because obviously it's under budget, but with the purchasing background, I look at the full purchase price, and, and, no, I'm happy, I'm not going to throw any objections today, but I just wanted to ask that question, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll make the motion then, that we approve the purchase of the 2017 F-354 truck from Varsity Ford, and the amount, do I have to separate the amounts, or can I just do the, and the Napa hide utility box for thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Review information provided and discuss potential changes in the city's South Lyon schedule of fees.
You should have gotten a color copy of the city's fee schedule. Anything in red is either a proposed change, or a existing change, or a question that I have for the council. So we will start at the top, under the city clerk treasurer's office fees. The city currently has on its fee schedule a twenty-five dollar non-sufficient funds check fee. We don't currently collect this on most of our checks, as our bank does not charge this to, back to us. So my question for the council, as this is something that was adopted as a policy, I believe in 2011, to add this fee, is, is this a fee the council wants to keep on the schedule? And if so, is this twenty-five dollars the amount we want? And do we want to begin enforcing the collection of this fee?
Yeah, what other disincentive would we have?
We wouldn't have any other disincentive, but right now, since our bank doesn't charge us when we have a check returned to us, which is normally why businesses charge that fee, because they're being charged by their banks, there's no cost to us, and we can just re-debit the person's account for whatever they wrote us the check for, and then make them give us certified funds to pay their utility bill, or pay their tax bill, certified funds being a money order, cash, or cashier's check.
But there's administrative time spent on that.
Yeah, there's costs associated with that.
There is, yes.
Thank you, that's what I was going to say.
How many people does this apply to?
I am, in speaking with Lori and Lisa, we get anywhere between eight and twelve non-sufficient funds checks a year.
So eight and twelve, and how much time does that take them?
Each time, we get one in maybe twenty minutes.
Because what I'm getting at is, look, I mean, I know there's administrative time, our people are salary, and if somebody's on hardship right now, and their checks are bouncing, the last thing we want to do is make it more difficult on them. So if it's only a few, I mean, again, the definition of a few is probably not eight or ten, but at, once a month for, I don't know.
It's either we do it or we don't. I mean, you can't, if you're leaving it up to the discretion of who to charge or...
I know, no, that's, that's, that's a great point. And I think for eight or ten, I don't think you charge it personally. I mean, like I said, if they're in a hardship right now, then, but, and at the same time, I don't want to disincentivize people from making their payments.
That's why this is a policy decision for the council to make.
But even if they're not in a hardship, it's still not negatively impacting us as a city.
Correct.
So that's why it's, I don't think I would enforce that either.
I'm saying you let it go.
Well, it's creating work that's not being accounted for, so, you know, they, they already processed it one time, now they have to go back and manually manipulate this money flow, so...
Well, Lynn, you just hired new, a couple new employees, correct, in the past six months?
Correct.
So it's not like we're, I don't want to say not giving you the help you need, and again, these...
So rather than doing the constructive stuff they're actually assigned to, then they can tend to this stuff?
Well, I think the residents, they have a hardship, they would feel otherwise.
I think this is a business decision, I think you've got to run City Hall like a business. I think if the bank, I don't understand why the bank's not charging, when every bank, every other bank I know, twenty-five is low, it's usually thirty-five to fifty, so I think I wouldn't even mind having this raised up to fifty dollars, whatever the bank fee is going to be at some point, which I'm sure you're going to be charged unless you have a banking arrangement, because you have all your money there, and so that maybe that's why they're waiving it. But I think there's still an administrative cost, and I don't see a problem with it.
Have they given any rationale why they don't charge? That is really unusual for a bank.
It's because we do all of our banking primarily with one bank.
I get that, but they're still a bank.
No, it's a courtesy way.
It's one of the few fees that they don't charge us.
Which means you're keeping a certain amount of money in their bank. That's probably what the requirement is.
We only had a handful, like we said, too, eight to twelve, that there's, that's part of it as well. If it were exorbitant, we probably would charge. Most businesses charge some kind of a fee, just like Maggie said, you know, I mean, you've got to run it like a business, and it really is that way. So, I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
So the decision of the council is to enforce the fee, and do we leave it at twenty-five dollars? Or do we raise it?
That's my, that's my fee.
Twenty-five dollars is okay.
Okay. All right, the next item is one that I was surprised to see on here, is a fee for Christmas tree sales. To my knowledge, the only permit that the city actually issues for Christmas tree sales is to a nonprofit organization each year, which we allow them to sell Christmas trees in McCatty Park. That organization does donate to the historical society to pay for the electricity that they use. So my question is, does the council want to continue to have a fee for Christmas tree sales lots, and then just agree to waive that fee for that organization when they come each year? Or is this a fee we want to eliminate from the fee schedule?
I'm fine with eliminating it.
Yeah, I think I am, too.
And I have mixed feelings, if it was a circumstance that, it was another nonprofit that was set up someplace else, and, you know, they were, they were willing to pay for power as well, I wouldn't have any misgiving with that, but if it's a commercial enterprise that requests being able to use city property, you know, I wouldn't mind seeing some revenue to justify that.
I think we can always come back to the commercial side of it. I think for right now, this is clearly an example that pertains only to a nonprofit. I think it's the Kiwanis that does it, and they return so much to the community.
Well, they don't pay it.
They return, they, they give so much to the community in terms of service.
Yeah, it is the Kiwanis, and, and I would imagine if a commercial organization came to us and asked for permission to sell trees, we wouldn't look real favorably upon that anyway, fee or no fee.
Yeah, I don't want to stick it to the Kiwanis, I mean, I say we get rid of it.
Always revisit it if you have to.
Is that the consensus of the council?
Yes.
All right with that.
The next one is highlighted, it's under amusement devices. I had to ask Chief Collins what those are. Those are actually games that are in, well, an example would have been the South Lyon Hotel, any kind of claw games, or other type of game devices. We are supposed to have a hundred dollar investigation fee, I'm assuming that probably took place when the South Lyon Hotel opened originally. There was also supposed to be a twenty-five dollar annual renewal fee for the, every business that had these. I spoke to the city clerk, to her knowledge, we've never actually enforced the annual renewal fee. So the question is, do we want to continue to have an annual renewal fee, or just the initial investigation fee for businesses if they want to put those types of devices in their business?
Do we collect the initial fee?
Chief Collins?
It's not collected by the police department.
So we don't know if someone puts a machine in their business, whether or not they pay the initial fee to begin with.
To my knowledge, it's one of those fees that most people in the community did not realize the city had a fee requirement for, and there will be others on the fee schedule that I will point out, that I think people don't realize that we had fees on the fee schedule for, and I think this is one of those as well.
Well, this is listed as a, as an investigation fee, so presumably, someone asking or wanting to put one of these machines in, undergoes some sort of an investigation, or makes some sort of an application. So, A, is there an application?
I believe there was, that's why I tried to have Chief Collins answer it, I assumed he would be the one doing the investigation.
And Chief, do you recall any investigations on, in your memory?
No, as I recall, this is one of those things that people come directly to City Hall for, and then it would get referred to us if there were investigation necessary, but I don't recall ever having done an investigation specifically for amusement devices.
What would, yeah, what would, what would the, an investigation entail? I mean, what would be the purpose of an investigation? Even, gambling, electronic gambling?
Perhaps to make sure at some point in time, and maybe it's not as valid anymore, that the machines were fair machines, and were not just there to take money from people when they had no chance of winning.
There was just a report on the other day that was showing the claw machines, how they're manip, how they can be manipulated, and they were, and the guy was kind of blowing the whistle on the whole deal. And he says they take off the box, they go in and they can dial this thing up and down, and they can turn it so you cannot win at all, or you can win on every pole, depending on what you do, and they're set up that way. And he says that it's in control, basically, of the people that run the game.
Would we have the ability to, to intervene if somebody filed a complaint that someone's machine wasn't fair?
That would be something that we, I'm not sure we would have the expertise to determine, and what we would probably do would be to refer it to some state licensing department.
The state licensing that was in the investigation.
As long as we could do that, I, I don't have any misgiving with just blowing this off.
How many games do we have in the city? I mean, seriously, I think of the claw example, and my, my son drains twenty bucks from me either way, even if it is rigged or not. It's...
Bowling alley.
Oh, yeah, the bowling alley?
Yeah.
Two or three of them at bowling alley.
Yeah. That's probably where I lost my money.
Most of the time, they want the kids to win. Most of the time, they want people to win, but the report was to show that it can be manipulated, and that is handled, that was handled by the state licensing board when investigations were called. But they were showing how easy it is to do, but most establishments don't really do that, because they want people to really play the game and win, you know?
I'm okay to shut that one.
Yeah.
That's, it's already been talked about.
So do we want to eliminate the investigation and the annual fee?
Yeah.
Is that a consensus of the entire council?
Well, I just don't know who would have the expertise to do the investigation to begin with. I mean, we'd have to hire somebody, it's going to cost more than twenty-five dollars, and then to hire somebody to do that.
I agree.
Yeah, but the investigation is a hundred bucks, the initial.
Investigation's a hundred, the annual renewal fee is twenty-five.
We're not really generating a lot of revenue off of this.
No.
Or are we protecting anybody, really?
To me, it's kind of an easy business decision to make.
Yeah. Councils should be aware that there is another ordinance, that if a business has more than three devices, then they have to apply and be licensed as an arcade. So that may be a whole nother discussion, but it's there.
Well, maybe we take a look at the ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't feel any more threatened by that than I do by this investigation fee, so...
So do we have a consensus to remove both fees? Yes. Okay. The next fees are the cemetery fees. We've talked for the past year about the fact that the perpetual care fund is losing money, and we needed to raise the fees at the cemetery on the sale of lots. I polled several communities statewide, as well as locally, for prices for their cemeteries, did not want to put us at the high end of cemetery fees, but also did not want us to be at the very bottom, due to the fact that we are eating into our perpetual care fund. So I am proposing to raise the resident rates to five-hundred-and-fifty for a grave, or for an adult grave, and a thousand for a non-resident, three-hundred for a resident infant, and four-fifty for a non-resident infant grave.
My only comment is, with respect to the infant graves, this is a very, very generous
community, and I would hope that anytime any parent loses their child, that the community, neighbors, or churches would come together and assist this family in paying this fee. I mean, I understand you're charging it, but I also want to just send a reminder out there that not every parent is lucky to have their children for a long time, and I think with an infant, it's even probably more difficult to manage. And I would also hope that City Hall would be very accommodating to any parent that came in here that had to pay this fee and didn't have anyone else to assist them, and would give them some time to pay this, even though a burial was probably important, and you didn't have the money. So, that's my only comment on that.
Yeah, along those lines, I'm not opposed to, well, let me phrase it this way, I'm, I think it's better if we leave the infant fees as they are, but if we're going to raise anything, then touch the, and raise the adult fees.
What's your definition of infant? Twelve months and under?
Lisa, how do you define the infant?
From what I understand, that's what it's considered, twelve months and under, a year old.
So just to put this in perspective, you want to raise the resident from four-hundred to five-fifty?
Yes.
The non-resident from eight-hundred to a thousand?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine with that. And this is based on your comparison with other communities? We're not at the high end, we're not at the low end, we're in, kind of in the middle?
Kind of in the middle.
It's fine with me.
And what, is that the consensus of the council?
Just the fam, just the adults? Okay.
Just the adults?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Wait a minute, you said just the adults?
Yeah, leave the infant as it is.
What about children?
Children, any, if they're over a year old, they fall under the adult.
Okay.
Okay, on the next page, there's just some text changes. On Saturday, the second line down, where it says Saturday, we're adding, "or after 2:00 p.m. open and close fees." That's because our DPW department leaves at 3:30, and if the funeral requires an open or close after 2:00 o'clock, that means our DPW workers were... or close after two o'clock, that means our DPW workers work overtime. So they need to go on the Saturday rates for the open and close. That's just been a standard policy, but I want to make sure that it gets put on the schedule so that people realize that when they look at the fee schedule. It's something we've charged in the past. It's just not been stated on the fee schedule.
All right. So it's Saturday or weekday after two P M. open and close?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the next line down under cremation, open and close fees, it will be adding no Saturday or after hours. And that's, again, a current policy that we've had. Nothing new. We're just stating it in the fee schedule so that people understand that.
Okay.
Under the monument foundations, on the right-hand side, you'll see we have multiple different sizes listed. I talked to Bob Martin. We actually only offer a few precast concrete sizes at a set rate. And if they want a different size than that, we have to pour it as a concrete foundation. And based on what size they want, we have to price that out based on the price of concrete at that time. So what I would like to do is rather than have things stated the way they are on the right, change it to the way they are on the left in the red to where the precast concrete sizes are listed at specific amounts. And then all other sizes will be quoted individually added to this fee schedule.
Makes sense.
That's good.
Okay. Onto page three, we get to water and sewer rates. Our water rates, as you know, went up June first. The financial advisor, when we were going through the budget and looking at the wastewater treatment bond and the wastewater rates, recommended a sixteen point seven five percent increase to keep the wastewater fund from continuing to spend more than it takes in. That's a very significant increase for our residents to take in at one time. What I tried to do was split that up over three years so that the first increase this year would go from three eighty-three, which was effective on six month of two thousand and ten. So this would be our first increase in six years. Once the council would approve the new rates, we would go into effect for the next billing cycle, a sewer rate of four oh five. And then on July one of two thousand and seventeen, go to four twenty-eight. And on July one of two thousand and eighteen, go to four fifty-two. Just so you know, I did compare those sewer rates to surrounding communities, and we are still in line or lower than our surrounding communities.
Would the sewer rates be affected during the summer months? Like, don't we offer, like after Memorial Day through Labor Day, we charge?
What we do is in the summer quarter.
Summer quarter.
Go back and we look at the three previous quarters for each individual bill, and we take that average of those three, and that's what we charge for the summer quarter.
Okay.
Okay. So that will help out here.
That also allows for people that are watering their lawns not to get overcharged for wastewater charge for water that's not going down the sewer.
Right.
Okay. Onto the next page. On page four, we get into planning and zoning fees. Some of this is just text, others are actual changes. The first is zoning verification letters. This is something that does not fall under FOIA and requires a significant amount of staff time because we have to go through all of the building department records and find copies of certificates of occupancy, look for any variances, any planning commission site plans, and go through and provide a letter to companies from all over the country for this. I know just since the beginning of August, I've done three zoning verification letters myself because our new zoning administrator is part-time and she is not up to speed on being able to do these. So it is a significant amount of time that goes into these. I looked at what other communities do, and there are a couple that actually have on their fee schedules a hundred dollar charge for zoning verification letters because it, again, it doesn't fall under FOIA and it does require a significant amount of staff time and copies, sometimes including large copies of the actual site plans are requested. That would be a new fee that's not on our current schedule.
Do most of the other communities you look at charge for that, or is it just limited, like with new growth, such as like Lion Township or Novi or?
Two of the communities that I looked at that charged for it are Northville and Brighton.
Okay.
And actually, the properties that are being looked at for these zoning verification letters are not new properties. The ones that I've done this month were one of our, actually, two of our shopping centers in the community and one of our apartment complexes.
Sure.
So is the council okay with adding that fee to the schedule?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. Under the zoning board of appeals, our current fee is two hundred dollars. I am proposing to increase the application fee for that to four hundred and fifty dollars. The reason for that is two hundred dollars does not cover our cost of publication for the hearing notice or the mailing cost. The average cost of publication for a ZBA appeal is two hundred and fifty dollars. And so we, at two hundred dollars, are already losing money just putting the hearing notice in the paper. By the time we do the mailing with the postage, the paper, the envelopes, everything else, we've lost a significant amount of money.
I have no issues with that one?
No.
No? Okay. The rest of this is just language added again, noting that for rezoning requests, special use approvals, and all site plans, that the applicant is responsible for any additional fees invoiced to the city by its consultants in conjunction with these applications and meetings. It's the same language all the way through pretty much the rest of the planning and zoning fees. That way, again, when someone submits these applications to the city, they know in advance that they're going to have to put that fifteen hundred dollar escrow minimum that the council passed the policy on a few months ago. So they know that they're going to have to pay the consultant's fees for the engineer and the planner.
Fair enough.
There's no more qualification as to what those costs will be than this, this little notice?
The minimum is fifteen hundred dollars, and it, it's, again, it's based primarily on what they're having done. That's why you've got the, the amount off to the side where a rezoning request for a single family starts at five hundred plus five dollars per acre or fraction thereof. But if it goes over that, any additional fees invoiced to the city is charged to the applicant. So they have an idea of where it's going to start. But if it's someone...
Usually not where people are concerned, where it's going to start. They want to know where it's ending.
Right. And if an applicant submits a complete and thorough application the first time, it won't exceed the fees here. The problems we've had with a lot of applicants is they submit incomplete applications, which is one of the reasons why we have started meeting with the applicants before they submit their applications now, to make sure that we go, go over every last detail with them on what they're going to need, who they're going to need it with, and have them ask any questions of the necessary people. And we have those meetings with the engineer and the planner and the building official there as well.
Yeah. Well, that should clearly be a given. I mean, there should be a checklist so there, everybody has an understanding of what the expectations are upfront. We've had a history of kind of a flowing need for more information, and that's just simply not fair to people. So we need to really buckle down and get our game pretty solid so everyone has an understanding going in what the expectation financially of them is going to be, rather than, you know, getting smacked every time you come in and there's a request for more depth of information. So.
Well, I think what you're doing, Lynn, is that you are presenting the department in a far more professional manner than it has been in the past. I think that the way you're conducting it is how other areas are doing it, where they sit down with the applicant prior to and go through. I think you come across far more professional when you do it that way, rather than the Keystone Cops where you're bumbling around and making phone calls, you know, for three weeks in a row trying to get information. So I have to commend you on improving the city's image with respect to upgrading some of our, delivery of our services. It's sorely needed, sorely needed. It's gone on for way too long.
Thank you.
I sat on the planning commission and saw it for almost, I don't know, six, seven years. It was an absolute joke. So I have to thank you for upgrading the city a little bit on this end.
All right. The next major change is on page seven where it says site plan review deposit. It used to say three thousand dollars there. However, the council adopted an ordinance amending the city code, you know, the city code chapters, chapter two dash three oh one and three oh two. That was setting that escrow policy with the minimum fifteen hundred. By taking the three thousand out and putting in site plan review deposit as to be determined by city manager per city code, they can look up the ordinance, they can see what the ordinance says, what the city code says, and then sit down with me. Again, this is part of the pre-application meeting where we determine what that site planet escrow fee is going to be based on what they're submitting and how much work it's going to go into it.
I'm fine with that.
The last change on that page is at the bottom of page seven. You'll notice in red where it says construction observation cost. It used to just read construction cost. That was very confusing for people. They couldn't understand why people were paying a construction cost fee to the city. That's the construction engineering cost fee. An example would be the construction observation that we've been doing for the utility and infrastructure improvements in the Knowles subdivision. Part of the agreement for that subdivision was that the city's engineer would oversee all of that to make sure that they were put into city specifications. That developer is paying for the city's engineer's time. And so we have a city construction observation cost in our fee schedule. We are billed by our engineer and we pass through those costs from, to the developer. So rather than confusing the residents, we're spelling it out saying that it's a construction observation cost, and it gives them an idea of how it's billed based on the cost of their project.
So it's, we take a deposit from them at the beginning and then we, we withdraw money from that deposit?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's fine.
So it's, there's no change really, it's just a clarification of the language?
No, no change. It's just a clarification of the language.
Now, that's charged off of that account hourly then, as it's accrued hourly?
Right. As H R C bills us, we deduct it from the deposit that they have placed with us for construction observation.
Okay.
All right. Next, we get into building permits. This is kind of an interesting one. Most communities determine the cost of their building permits based on the I C C chart of the cost of construction multiplied by seventy-five percent of the budget cost for running their building department. Since we outsource the majority of our building department other than our building secretary, it's very difficult to determine annually what the overall building department cost is because we only have one employee and the rest of our department is based on what we pay our contract employees, which is a contracted amount, which is they get seventy-five percent of the permit fees. Well, how do you calculate seventy-five percent of the permit fees if you don't know what your overall budget is when you're trying to determine seventy-five percent of the building department budget? Talked to Ann, the building department secretary, talked to our contracted building officials and inspectors, trying to come up with a better way to do it. One of the issues we have with contractors when they submit something is everyone wants to get the lowest cost building permit. So they will say their cost of construction is X, when in fact, their cost of construction is Y, because if they say it's X, their building permit is going to be A. But if it's Y, their building permit is going to be B. To level the playing field, what I am suggesting is that we continue to use the I C C chart for cost of construction. And that's determined on the type of construction and the square footage. And it's a national figure that's set annually based on the cost of construction for a type of construction and the square footage. So we use that to determine the cost of construction.
It's not regional?
The state adopts...
Because that makes a huge difference.
The state adopts a state version of it, and that's what we use. So, yeah, it's regional.
I mean, prevailing wage and stuff is a...
It's a Michigan version.
Span.
We use the I C C chart to determine the cost of construction. But rather than trying to come up with some nebulous number that may or may not be seventy-five percent of the cost of our building, we go back to a similar formula that is easier to calculate our building permits. And we start with a flat fee of seventy-five dollars for a building permit for zero to a thousand dollars. And that includes your first initial inspection. And then for each additional thousand or fraction thereof, up to a hundred thousand dollars, it is fifteen dollars. And for every thousand dollars, over a hundred thousand, up to a million, it's another fifteen dollars. So it's easier to figure out the cost of your permits. So it makes things easier on our building secretary. And it's easier for everyone to understand what their building permit costs are going to be when they submit their plans to the city for review. Because they know what chart and what we're going to use as construction cost. Based on that, they know immediately, they can come in, what they're getting for it. Because right now, they don't know whether they're getting any inspections with it. And currently, we have included initial and final inspections. Most communities do not include final building inspections with their building permit fees. They include the initial inspection. Because the final building inspection is actually a separate charge, which you'll see below. It's a, considered a certificate of occupancy inspection because it goes into far greater detail of an inspection. So what I'm suggesting is a new way of calculating the building permits and then adding a separate certificate of occupancy inspection fee.
That's the way to do it.
So, hearing this, I actually think this is great. Because from what you are describing, it doesn't, it sounds like it's not clear at all what they're going to be paying. Can you maybe speak more about that? What, how much the difference is the I C C chart will make a difference to what it is today, tonight?
The I C C...
People go through now.
What they go through now, a builder will submit what they say is the construction cost. And then our building officials will say, no, this is what we say it's going to cost because we're using...
How much are they off? I didn't mean to cut you off. I was curious, in general.
It depends on, it depends on each individual project. Some can be one percent off, some can be as much as thirty percent off.
Wow. Wow. So my, my initial thought is, I'm just surprised that we haven't had this guideline years ago. It's quite obvious that it needs to be clear for people. So thank you. This is a big step for us.
It's not quite as cut and dry as that, though. Because clearly, the SafeBuild has an incentive to, to try to pump fees up. So the idea that...
Having standards.
And you get a, if you get a particularly efficient builder, he can shave costs a lot. So the idea that the customary I C C review isn't necessarily this, this overarching, this is the accurate accounting of where costs lie. It's a generalized averaging of where those price points are.
But, but at least it's down on paper so that everybody has an understanding of where we're coming from. And that's, that's what it is. It's, it's taken out the discretion. I mean, it's, it's basically... I mean, it's basically-
Unless you get a really good builder that is, you know that he's saving you money, and then you're getting jammed by a permit.
Right, but this explains it so that it's there in writing, this is what we're basing it on as far as the fees are. Now, you can argue back and forth about, you know, what you think your costs are, but I mean, bottom line is it's in writing now. And that's what I like about this, so we don't have to have any second guessing or anything going on. I mean, I agree with Joe, this should have been, I mean, how much construction have we had in the last 20 years?
Oh, yeah.
And I can't believe we haven't had something that spells it out in black and white on a piece of paper about what your charges are going to be, and this is what we're basing it off of. Kind of scary, but anyways.
I think what I like about this, Lynn, is that I work with certificate of occupancy inspection fees, and that is separate. And it just, I was shocked to find out that we weren't charging this as a separate fee, and that just tells me how backward this, that the department has been, you know? And you're talking decades that this has been like this. Most of the areas around here charge us as a separate fee.
Yes.
I, I just, I don't know. But thank you for catching it, and once again, modernizing the department. Sorely needed.
So is the council consensus that we're okay with the new way of calculating the building permits?
Yeah.
And adding the certificate of occupancy fee at 5% of the building permit fee?
Yes, with, with thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I just want to maybe, to use the vernacular, pump the brakes a little bit. Have, I haven't, I'm just raising a question whether, having not reviewed the SafeBuild contract, whether they've had any input on the change in fees. Does, would this affect the contract that they work under in any way? I guess is the question to raise.
SafeBuild has had input on the change in fees. When I met with them last week on another matter, I took time to go over any and all changes and take their input under advisement. So they're aware of what I'm proposing, and they're okay with it.
And you know what, Lynn, the ICC chart, anybody in building knows exactly what this is. They've seen it, they know what it is. And you can go anywhere, and, so this is not going to come as a surprise to anybody who's in the industry. So, I, again, I'm going to say, I can't believe this wasn't done decades ago. This has been out here for a while. The ICC chart's been out there for a long, long time.
Okay, if you go to page nine, at the top of the page, you'll see that we have a fee for sandwich boards. It is a $50 per calendar year fee. It is not strictly enforced. Some businesses do actually pay the fee, others do not, because they don't know that we have a sandwich board sign fee. So, this again comes down to being a policy question for the city council of, is this a fee that we want to continue to have? And do we want to strictly enforce it? The way our ordinance is written now, sandwich board signs have to be within 10 feet of the front of the business, and we do have businesses down Pontiac Trail in shopping centers that will sometimes put sandwich board signs out in the right-of-way area to advertise their business, which actually violates the city's policy. So we do have to go in and have discussions with them about that. But the question is, do we want to charge for putting sandwich board signs out? Several businesses that I can think of in the downtown area that use them include Draft Street, Grand Trunk, Divine Yoga, Annie Jewelry, I believe Lake Street Tavern uses them sometimes.
I'm for them, but I, the idea of someone being further than the 10 feet away thing isn't as big a problem to me as if they're putting it in the right-of-way and it becomes an obstruction to the sidewalk, that's my concern. So I don't know how you make a regulation that, you know, gives them power to be able to say you have to move that because it's an obstruction in the sidewalk, but proximity to the door, I don't think should necessarily be the trigger if they're, if the sidewalk is farther than 10 feet away.
Well, most of the businesses that put them in the right-of-way put them in a grassy area.
Mm-hmm. See, that seems optimal to me, so.
Do other communities charge for?
I could not find another community that charged for sandwich board signs.
This doesn't seem very business friendly either, in my perspective.
That was my thought.
Except for the regulation aspect of it. I mean, if they're putting them in as an obstruction, that was my only concern.
Well, if they're putting them in as an obstruction, we can go after it from a code enforcement standpoint, rather than an annual fee standpoint.
I'm not sweating the revenue, it was simply being able to address placement.
Right, and that's, but that's a code enforcement, so we can-
Yeah.
As long as we've got the enforcement angle covered, I don't see why we'd bother for a fee.
So the consensus is to eliminate that fee?
Yes.
Yep. Speaking of enforcement, though, I'm curious about subdivisions, how that's going to be impacted, because certainly block parties, annual meetings, those are always up in sandwich boards.
Well, again, that, those would fall under, for subdivisions, those would fall under temporary signs, and those aren't businesses, so I don't think that would be an issue for subdivision signs.
It's the other ridiculous sign aspect that we deal with.
No Christmas lights.
Okay, the next one down, and I'm sorry I didn't highlight it, contractor license registration. It didn't get highlighted. I'm proposing to increase that fee from $15 to $20. That is a fee we only collect, I think it's once every three years, because it's when the contractor's license gets renewed with the state, then they have to renew it with the city. So, while it's, and it's also a fee that is maximum controlled by the state as well, so $20 is the maximum that we can charge for that.
Do cities typically do that?
Yes.
Really? Yeah, you don't want unlicensed contractors working.
So is everyone okay with increasing that to 20?
Sure.
All right. Then, under plan review, this is part of where it comes out a little bit better for understanding-
What about the inspection?
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the inspection. This is a fee that, to my knowledge, we've never charged, and couldn't remember that we would ever do this inspection as well. I believe it's something that is worth discussing. When a new business opens up in any location, the building department usually does have to go in and make sure they haven't done any substantial changes, things like that. But I'm not sure whether, you know-
Building and fire, both.
Whether we want to charge $50 for that, whether we want to start enforcing this. Again, that's a policy decision for the council.
How do we obligate them having this without some kind of a notice? I, I keep thinking of Grand Trunk and all the nonsense that's taken place since that, that whole thing kicked off. Had we had some obligation for them to register as a new business in a new location, we could have pretty much caught this upfront, rather than after it was already up and running.
Well, that's a different policy question for the council. A lot of communities actually have businesses register with the city. They don't, some charge a fee, a license, a city licensing fee, others do not. That's a policy decision for the council. But anytime a new business opens or relocates, they have to register with the city so the city knows what businesses are in town and where they're located. That's not something South Lion has ever done. I have answered numerous questions in the past from people that are looking at South Lion or who are opening businesses, about whether they need to get a city business license.
Right.
But that's not something South Lion has right now.
How would it be triggered? Through the realtors or something, or, I mean, how do we, how do we get the word out that that's an obligation, that they need to give notice?
Well, you can start with the newspaper, you start with word of mouth, with the realtors. Bob can talk to all of the commercial realtors as he's doing his economic development and let them know that this is a, I mean, first we would have to amend the city code to add that as a requirement. And then, moving forward, we would have to let everyone know, the realtors, the business owners, everything like that, that as they make changes, move, relocate, open a new business, things like that, that they have to register with the city. And then, we'd want to go around to all of our existing businesses with a registration application and have them fill it out, just so that we have everything current and up to date with the existing businesses.
So if a business was already there, like Grand Trunk, we'll say, and then they move to the next store, and say they paid that fee already, did they pay again?
Actually, I don't think we should do the fee, because once they're, once they're given notice to us, it gives us the ability to recognize whether or not work is going to be needed-
Yeah, the fee, I agree.
You know, for construction, or, or if it's already taken place and they're trying to sneak under the radar with that.
I agree with that, I like to rephrase that, I guess.
Yeah.
Right.
More or less, just would you re-register for the move opposed to-
Right, if you would relocate, you would still have to, you'd have to re-register for your new location.
How's it work now? If I wanted to move into a former tenant, say I'm a new tenant, you know, and I want to move into an established business, but I want to make some slight modifications, but nothing that requires, like, a permit, either mechanical, or plumbing, or any electrical, or anything like that. I just want to move some stuff.
But as long as the-
But how do they, how do they inform the city right now? They don't?
Right now, they don't.
They don't.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Well, it's voluntary. Like Coral Sash, they reached out to the city.
Right.
They put in two dressing rooms, and they had to jump through hoops with drawings to locate where they are. It was actually kind of ridiculous.
Well, I'm more-
It's, it's an obligation that's necessary, but nonetheless, it was kind of ham-handed, I thought, the way it was-
Well, I mean, my concern more is for safety concern, like with Mike, with, you know, fire code. We want to make sure that their establishment meets our current fire code. How do we know?
We chase this a lot. It's somewhat helpful being a smaller jurisdiction, but it's a lot, just kind of fortunately, most of, or all of our staff live in the city, we try to keep a heads up on it. The biggest issue is change of use, which is what we dealt with in Grand Trunk, where it went from a office to a mercantile, which completely changes things. So, that, that's tough. And in a registration, I do know other communities that have it, not looking at it from a revenue generating perspective, but just simply an information perspective-
Yeah, I'm not concerned about, right, right.
Would be very useful, and I would fully support that, because it, it is tough. And sometimes, yeah, Coral Sash, they, they were awesome. They came forward and we were able to work with them, and they really weren't doing a change of use from the prior one, but there were some updates they had to make. That, but the change of use is where, where that's, if you go from mercantile to-
That was pretty significant.
Yeah, so that, that's it. But it's, I would definitely say this is a gap that we currently have.
So if we eliminate the fee, what would we have to do, though, to get them to register?
We'd still have to change the city code to create that ordinance that states that we now require businesses to register and adopt that ordinance. And then, it would just become a city policy, and we'd create a registration form and get the information out to the businesses, get the information out to the realtors once that's done, and then get our existing businesses to complete a registration form and get the database put together.
And the registration form would also include the intended use-
Right.
For the business, yeah.
So-
That seems like that would be a good thing to put on our website, too.
So, I have a question. So, right now, they're not doing anything. They can just move in and-
Yes.
Okay, so, I maybe view this a little bit differently than everybody. So, my opinion is always, the less we can be involved with our hands on private property, the better. And now, I understand the fire aspect. Certainly, we don't want to have any issues, but to me, it seems more counterproductive and less business friendly to start making businesses register and do all this than leaving it as it is. I'd prefer to leave it as it is.
Well, wouldn't you want to know what their intended use is, so that if they have issues, you can address those issues before, like with Grand Trunk. I mean, there were some major issues after the fact. The issue is, if you deal with the issues beforehand, saying what's your intended use, okay, then there doesn't have to be a change as far as any of the safety, you know, fire code, you know, so you won't be concerned about that. I would rather address it. If I was a business owner, and I'm just, my personal opinion, I'd rather address the issues before I did anything. I mean, I'm not paying for it, you know, it's not like I'm just saying, look, I want to put in a retail store or something like that.
Yeah.
Is it up to fire code if I do this, and this is, on this space? And I mean, if I know now that it's not, then I may think about whether or not I want to go forward with the project versus putting, you know, doing it and have to make all these changes after I've already signed the lease. So that's, that's the only issue.
Saying it anyway.
Right. So, I mean, that's the only issue.
Side of that point, too, is in the event that something bad happened, and we didn't intervene, we didn't impose ourselves in invalidating that their use was proper, you know, we're getting jammed up on it, because we were irresponsible by not, not taking a review of that.
I know what you're saying, Joe, that's a valid point. The thing is, so I'd rather know before I incur the costs, than after the fact, and then get stuck with a big bill after I've already signed a lease.
I think that's all important.
Yeah.
Well, the city can't really be brought into something that they don't know. So-
No, that's why we should know.
You know, so if the city doesn't know what is going on, I don't think you have to worry about liability, because somebody moved into someplace at some point. I mean, you can only be charged-
Let's have a matter of shedding responsibility to try to help out.
You can only be charged with so much knowledge in terms of what you are actually doing. So, I, that's not an argument that I, that I think carries much weight. But I do think that the licensing or the registration is important. The question is, is what is your timeline? So are you going to, you know, right now, you have businesses already there, but somebody new, is this now going to be a requirement that before they move in, where's your timeline of making them register? That, that's what I want to know.
Right, before or after the lease is signed?
Yeah, before or after the lease is signed, because that's where your liability's going to be.
Right.
That, that is exactly where your liability's going to be.
That would be a policy decision for the council.
Yeah, that's good.
My recommendation would be before the lease is signed, so that we can better assist businesses as they are coming into our community.
Right. I mean, we don't want to be a deterrent. We want to say, look, okay, that's fine, you won't have an issue with this space, versus after the fact, we are a deterrent, because you're saying, we're saying that, hey, you have to update the property. So, I'm sorry, you already signed the lease, but in order to, you know, do what you want to do for that intended use, you're going to have to do this, or you're going to have to meet these requirements. I mean, I would want to know before. Not the city personally, as somebody that's looking at maybe bringing a business in, because you want to come across as, you know, we're trying to work with you, as opposed to trying to, you know, say, hey, guess what, you owe us money after the fact, or you have to spend all this money to make the corrections.
So Dennis Smith and I actually get a fair amount of these informally currently, and I would say at least half, the developer or owner decides not to go forward with the project, because not only that, what would often drives it is not necessarily the fire code, but ADA, and, and that's-
Right.
So there's both, and I think that we're, we're probably getting the benefit from some other cities, that people kind of think that there's this, because oftentimes they call us, either Dennis or I, okay, how do I start this? And then we're like, well, we don't really have a process, but thank you for calling, and we work through it. So it's, it's informal, it's kind of in place, but it'd be great to formalize it. And to your point, the earlier, the better, because a lot of these, I think some of them think that if they could just do it under shade, under dark at night, great, but when they realize that we're, no, we have a process, and we're going to follow up with you on this, yeah, a fair amount decide not to go forward with it. But I think it saved everyone a lot of headache, though, that they decided not to. So, just we, this process is happening, happening now, it's just not formalized, so.
So I guess the question is, do we waive the fee, or do we revisit that one?
Where are our competitors doing? What's Melford doing? What's Brighton doing? What's Lion Township? Are they charging a fee?
I would have to look, because I was not prepared to discuss business registration this evening.
That's okay.
I don't have a problem waiving the fee, I'm more, it's just the intended use, to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
I think that's the balance. The balance is, go ahead with the registration, but on the other hand, be as accommodating to the businesses as possible, and don't charge the fee.
Right. But then, in order to look at the registration, we're going to have to amend the city code?
Correct.
Okay.
So you need a code amendment?
I'm good with that.
All right.
All right, no fee.
We're with that.
No fee.
All right. All right. Okay, moving on to plan reviews. Hopefully, this better explains for Glenn, um, so that people can understand the fees that go with some of those reviews that were spelled out earlier. Um, for commercial and industrial, um, plan review, I have set that at eighty dollars per hour, um, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, forty-five dollars an hour. The reason I've chosen those two rates for those two, um, as an hourly rate, um, right now, our current planner has been doing, uh, a lot of our work at a hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, but he has hired a contract employee that he bills out at seventy-nine dollars an hour, and that employee has been doing, started to take over other, a significant amount of the review work for South Lion, um, it's a former employee of South Lion, um, so I think with that, we would not be losing money at charging eighty dollars an hour for the commercial plan review. Um, the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing plan review fees, our electrical inspector is the one that does the electrical plan reviews, mechanical and plumbing goes to Safe Built, and again, um, it's done on an hourly fee from them, and I spoke to them, and the forty-five dollar fee covers what they would charge us for that. Um, for the residential, because those are, um, smaller plans, um, they take obviously significantly less time, um, as well as alterations such as garages, additions, different things like that, we just went with a set fee of a hundred and twenty-five dollars for less than thirty-five hundred square feet for all trades, um, greater than thirty-five hundred square feet, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, and then any alterations, fifty dollars, because again, um, all the trades are only going to spend a minimal amount of time reviewing any plans for those types of constructions, because those are new, new houses being built, or any additions.
Lynn, just to put this in perspective, if I were to build, hypothetically, if I were to build a new house, and I hired my own general contractor, the general contractor then would pay, if it was less than thirty-five hundred square feet, for the plan review of the new house I wanted to build, the general contractor would be charged, well, I would be charged, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for that plan review?
Yes.
Okay. And then if you have a developer coming in that hypothetically wanted to put in a subdivision of a hundred and sixty-five homes, with a, um, you know, the, 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 uh, new construction for each home would be less than thirty-five hundred, would it be a hundred and twenty-five per home? Or would it just be a...
That would be billed out on an hourly rate, because that is a, um, sort of a horse of another color, because that is a, um, development.
Okay, I'm just, I want to make sure that...
That, that's, as opposed to a single residential home, that's a full site.
Okay, okay. I'm fine with that.
Are we okay with those rates?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Onto the next page, page ten. On this, um, you'll see that we've added a final inspection fee under plumbing at fifty-five dollars. Again, right now, we've been under our permits, initial permits, which are actually very cheap, initial permits for plumbing is thirty dollars, and has included initial and final inspections, um, so that we basically lose money on that, because it costs us more than that to have the inspectors out there. Um, we have the application just including the initial inspection, and I'm proposing to add a final inspection fee of fifty-five dollars, and then increasing the contractor licensing fee, which again, is only once every three years, from fifteen to twenty dollars.
So if I wanted to pull a permit for a plumbing project in my own home, it'd be thirty for the initial pulling of the permit, and then fifty-five for the final inspection?
And then depending upon what work you're doing, there may be other additional charges.
Okay. All right.
And if you don't, if you come out with a final inspect, which is come up, if you come out with a final inspection, and it's not ready?
Right.
Is it a fifty-five again for the next time?
For, for the fi, for an additional final inspection. If you have other inspections along the way, there is a additional or re-inspection fee, which is two lines up, which is thirty-five dollars, so if you're doing a brand-new home, there's going to be multiple plumbing inspections, there may be a initial, a halfway-through, and then a final, so you may end up paying for one additional and one final.
Okay, but if you were doing a remodel of an existing bathroom?
Most likely only going to pay for the permit, which includes your initial, and then your final.
Since that's something that some of us might be considering right now, so I'm just curious, all right.
I'm going to write that down.
Yeah, I know, my career.
We'll, we'll make sure that Ann knows you need to get your permit.
Yeah, yeah, check the, check the garbage, right.
Okay, um, electrical permits are, um, very similar, except on this one, the contractor license registration fee does not go up, because the state does not permit that one to increase, fifteen dollars is the maximum for electrical contractors, but it does add the final...
Mechanical's going to end up being just the same as plumbing, you skipped over that.
Oh, did I skip over that?
I mean, it's outlined the same way, so...
Yes, mechanical is identical to plumbing. And then, the electrical does not increase the contractor, but increases and adds a final inspection fee.
Sure.
Okay. On page thirteen, um, this is where we entered into some interesting fees that I'm not sure the city actually still needs to have on its fee schedule. Um, this is for applications for people wanting to do motion pictures, televisions, or videos, um, still photography on public property, which, um, to my knowledge, we don't charge local photographers, or anyone that comes in and takes pictures on city property. Um, we've had people use our parks, I believe, for senior pictures, and weddings, and assorted different things, and never charged them a hundred and seventy-five dollar fee, um...
This came in vogue with the, the film incentives.
Right, but I believe the film incentives have all been revoked, so my question is, do we want to remove all of these, um...
Yes.
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Say no more.
That is done.
See, you can bring your films here, because we're really cheap now.
We're the Hollywood of the Midwest, right here.
Um, the next section is DPW expenses, um, we have expenses listed for equipment and employees. Um, I recommend, generally, this is used for recouping recovery costs, if we have to use city equipment or city staff for, um, recovery after an accident, or different things, and we have to bill for restitution, that type of thing, but our fees are out of date, and it's difficult to keep them up to date. However, MDOT annually publishes an equipment rate, um, and that is what most communities use, is the MDOT published rate for all the different types of equipment, so what I would recommend is that we eliminate our published rates, and just change that to state the city of South Lion utilizes the annual publicized MDOT rates for equipment.
Are these relatively commensurate with what our in-house rental rate is?
Well...
Yeah.
That is our in-house rental, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
Is there a big difference between our numbers and the state? Just out of curiosity.
There is right now, because these rates were adopted in two thousand and ten, and so, um, they're six years out of date.
Are the state rates higher?
State rates are higher, yes.
Yeah, automatically.
Automatically, in the state rate.
Yeah, so, so if we just say we're going to adopt the MDOT rates, the annual, MDOT rates, then we, MDOT sends me a book each year with the annualized rates, and we can just accept that, and that way, we know exactly what they are each year.
Do our surrounding communities adopt, use the MDOT?
Yes, our surrounding communities use the MDOT rate.
Fine with me.
Well, what I like about this, Lynn, is that you're reducing government decision to a, a certain level of efficiency here. You know, if you just use the MDOT rates, they're published, you go to them, you don't have to come back to council, there's no other issue to deal with, and it's a very efficient way to establish the fees, so I think efficiency is always something that we need to look, look to in terms of dealing with stuff like this.
Okay.
That's good, I'm glad you found that.
Thank you. Um, the last part on this is the state barricade pricing, um, this one, I actually recommend that we remove charges for barricading, because we don't actually charge any of our residents for barricades, and, um, barricading does fall in that state equipment listing as well, so, I mean, when block, people have block parties, when churches have events, when businesses have events, and they ask to use barricades, cones, barrels, the DPW is more than willing to, you know, help out and keep their residents safe by putting them out and making them available, we don't charge for them, so I would suggest that we take this off and just leave it as part of, again, the MDOT rates, if we need to do it as part of a recovery, we would have that in the MDOT rates.
I agree.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, now, to the last page of the fee schedule. Um, under the police fees, um, the bicycle license, I spoke to Chief Collins on that, he says he doesn't remember issuing a bicycle license, um, and there's a one-dollar charge for it, so, um, if our police department is not issuing them, there's not a...
Take it off.
Take it off, yeah, yeah.
I still have my registration card from my license on there. It was a long time ago.
Um, and then, lastly, under the fire department fees, I believe all of those fall under our FOIA regulations for cost recovery now, so we would need to, um, just list those, um, individually as, at the city's stated FOIA rates, rather than individual rates.
That's fine.
Okay, do we have any other questions on the fee schedule? Yes?
I do. Uh, it just stuck, stuck out to me, the solicitor peddler license application, I guess my, it's more of a technical question, when you have, let's say, a window salesman, or whatever they're selling, vacuum, does each person have to carry the license, or is it the company has to get one? How does that work?
I can speak to that. Uh, first of all, that ten-dollar fee is not the actual application fee, that is only the background fee, background investigation fee per individual. There's an established rate that the clerk's office charges for the company for obtaining the permit, and the price for that varies depending on the length of, that the entity is requesting the permit and the authorization to solicit. Now, the ordinance does require that every individual that is out there soliciting has a permit, or a copy of the permit physically in their possession. We get it all the time, where solicitors will come, and their favorite line is, "Oh, my boss has the permit." Well, that doesn't get it, if you don't have the permit, you can't solicit, and if we catch you, we're going to write you the citation, not your boss, not your company.
So an actual license or a copy of the license?
The permit.
Yes, as issued by the city clerk.
So last year, when, and I don't recall, maybe you can refresh my memory, last year when we had the, the peddlers in the street, that were not the, the BFW or anything like that, did they each have copies of the permits? I think it was Second Chance Network, or...
Those are not peddlers, those are persons exercising their First Amendment rights, and they're not required to have a permit.
Okay, that answers my question.
So the guys come to my door, say, "Hey, I'm doing work for your neighbor down the street", those guys are supposed to...
They should have a permit, that's commercial enterprise.
Okay.
That's the window guys, that's the student painter, that's, that's everybody.
So the easiest way to get rid of them is to ask them to see their permit, because most of the time, they will immediately leave your doorstep.
I'll tell you who I call about every year, are the ice cream trucks.
To my knowledge, there's one ice cream truck that went through the process and got a permit this year.
I have another question. Um, it, I didn't see, maybe I missed it, but I didn't see dog license on there, is that?
Dog license fees are set by the county, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um, what about garage sale?
Garage sales are on the first page, just above the Christmas tree sales, garage sale permits are five dollars.
Got you, okay, thank you. That's all I had, thank you.
Are there any other questions? All right, I will update the fee schedule, and then we will bring it back for final adoption.
Great job, Lynn.
Thank you.
That's a lot of work.
Does anybody else find the garage sale permit to be kind of silly?
Yep.
Um, you know, if you have somebody that's doing it perpetually, maybe they need to get a, some kind of a business license or something, but the idea of someone having a garage sale out there twice a year seems kind of ridiculous to go through, having to come to City Hall and get a five-dollar permit.
I have another question, too, in regards to what you're saying as well, and like Lloyd, that, it comes up all the time, because I, I live next door to the police station, and they have to pick up a thousand garage sale signs every Saturday, it seems like, and it seems to really be aggravating to those guys, and everybody, you know, for their part of it, too, I mean, is there any way, get around that somehow? I mean, it seems like a total lose, waste of time of the police to be picking up signs that is chronically being done, you know?
Somebody has to do it, and if we don't enforce that, then you're going to have your right-of-way absolutely littered with signs, and people will be more than happy to put there and never pick up.
I'm just trying to get a good answer for somebody, because I've been asked by many people, and I, and I say that, but it's like, they don't really understand.
And, and we only pick them up if they're in the right-of-way, unless the officer makes an error of judgment somehow, but that, that's a rare occurrence.
They just need their neighbor's permission to put the thing on their, their property, rather than the basement, yeah.
But it's been asked by quite a few people, so...
Okay, bye.
Downtown.
Just a second, we discovered a computer glitch.
The schools told us we could use this, however, they didn't allow us. Who did I ask for their password?
Oh.
I can give a little update while, uh, thank you, Lynn. Basically, um, what we're trying to hook up is about an eight to ten-minute presentation, um, as a new person looking at creating a downtown management program, all the positives that downtown offers, and I think it's a good thing, it's a good exercise, because there's a very good base here, that people, like, have a seat.
Yeah, I can read some lines.
We get a feedback.
There you go.
Yay.
It's actually nice to have this TV that's working.
There it is. Wow.
That's good.
We have success. Please, Lord.
I don't know, I don't know if I can just pull three.
Let's get up here.
Yeah, it's just a little bit. Oh, okay, good.
It's actually nice to have this TV that's working.
There we have success. Please Lord. Oh, okay, good. Good. We're good, full screen?
Yep.
Thank you, God. I, I want to make clear, this is a sampling of great things because I was, certainly someone will feel they're left out. And so this is not everything great about downtown, but I think this is just my first take. I feel comfortable now after three months on the job and moving forward, so.
Should be able to just hit enter. Try just hitting enter. Enter isn't working.
Okay, all right. Thanks God. I need 101. Basically, what, what I, I've tried to break it down into those pieces, some order to these good things, great things downtown. All the necessary pieces that I've seen. And so managing downtown, the titles to these items will be those pieces. So key pieces, that slide that was a kibosh, was key pieces moving forward. And basically, the way my mind kind of thinks after 35 years of working with downtowns is these are the pieces that really that we need to look at. Are, are they good? Can they be better? So I think our entry points are very good. I think coming in from the south, I think needs some work, but I think our entry points are very good. Certainly coming in from the east, the tree canopy is incredible. A very unique building that I hope we can address and keep. Wonderful addition. Now coming in from the west on Lake Street, again, the tree canopy and the surrounding neighborhoods, the community character is incredible. The historic buildings, the historic businesses that are in those entry points. I'm going to address this in a few minutes, this building is very intact.
That's a nice house on the corner.
You already got your truck, Bob.
The law need mode.
I know that, what's great is that the adaptive reuse of historic buildings to new uses though, I think are a really good thing, that we have good precedent here. Again, now coming in from the north, this is about an 1850s building. So destination businesses, I think we've got some definite destination businesses. Certainly the quilt shop, we hope they'll stay. There's some talk that she's making plans to move, but I hope we can keep them. Certainly Carl Sash has become a destination business because of how they market themselves. And I think this is really interesting, how they market themselves. They have special events in the evening, they have charity events, and I think they've done a wonderful job as a destination business. We need to clone them. Parking, I think we're blessed with parking. I think the city was forward thinking. I think that the signage, marking that, the basic signage on the lots is good. I think we need additional directional signage to re, to match the parking lot signage. So I think that's a good thing. I, I know some of these lots are designated for future development, of course, and the new master plan. But even with that, I think the master plan is very good for parking. And I think any parking problem is now really more of a perceived problem than a real problem. On-street parking is great. We have about 114 on-street spaces, and that's a good thing. I think our historic architecture, our sense of place, which is recognized as a key piece of attracting economic development now. We've got wonderful building stock, of course, 1870s, great detail in our buildings. I think they're very important. I think we're learning that as we deal with the hotel. And I don't know why this computer is downloading up the photos. 1880s, the detail, I just think the detail in our buildings is incredible. And those are things, I think, looking forward, and we're learning lessons in other projects, why this is so important. The handiwork of line up there. We have building owners that I'll speak to briefly after this presentation that are now approaching to restore these details, because they're finding that they're very important. So we're just blessed with great architecture in this town. So we should celebrate it all, even this wonderful small building from 1810, 1820. So we, we really broached that whole era of the early 20th century as well. Great detail. And again, this occurred in the late 1930s as a, some problems with the brick building, but very interesting detail that was added, and of course there are issues with it right now. We would hate to lose this. Signage, I think we've got some wonderful examples. Quality signage, congratulations to moving forward with this kind of, it's almost preliminary kind of a wayfinding system. This is a very high quality sign, speaks well, and kind of heightens the expectations of our quality market because of a quality sign. Historic signage, again, I'm going to note this evening that we have five additional people. Because of the discussion on historic rehab with the hotel, I've been approached, and I was just meeting tonight with someone that's looking forward to this state designation. We have many good examples of signage that we can use. These monument signs, the landscaping combination are good. Again, we have wonderful plantings too with a lot of these signs, but these are, these are high quality monument signs. Getting into other kinds of signage, trying to, you know, working with the realtors, adding our own side-by-side signs, stressing retail priority downtown. I'll blow up on what that is if you haven't walked by and seen that one. Again, I think we can send a message that we're looking for retail as a priority, and we can do it in a subtle way, and then a very aggressive way, face-to-face with the realtor.
Is there a phone number on that?
No, we don't want to take away from the realtor. Certainly, I have a relationship with the building owners and a relationship with the realtors. And I know there's a touchy situation with realtors. We purposely do not, do not want to take on their, like, public space. Again, this is just one example, but I think we have a unique public space here. I think all spaces are important. I know we have some city property that's really in a holding pattern, and probably holding for new development in the master plan. But there are areas with public space where it makes sense to invest. I think this is a good symbol of high-quality investment in public space. The trees, flowers, and benches, another element that all works together for a quality apartment. And those tree canopies, the street trees themselves in front of the historic buildings. Simple additions like these private planters, I think are high quality, we add. We're not over-regulating, which is a wonderful thing. I think people are encouraged to do it more by fear pressure, which is a good thing. The light poles and the clock are a good, great investment. At some point, they'll need to be repainted, but I think that's an investment that has a lot more life within it. And these are things that you match, or even if, they're in good standings with the other communities around with your, your light poles. There tends to be a tendency that people don't think there's a lot offered downtown. I think you have a lot to offer down. Your flags and banners, I think are a real positive addition. I think it's great that you try to highlight seasons, you work with community groups. Personal priority of football, I think that's a good thing. But, no, it's wonderful how you work with the high schools, both high schools. Farmer's market is real positive. Progressive communities are all seeing the farmer's markets and are expanding. I think that someday, hopefully, as this market matures, we'll be looking at a permanent facility, hopefully someday, as this is a development site. Like, the most important aspect of the positives that are in place really are the businesses, the people, and the places that, that are here. Those are the building lots. These wonderful businesses like Grant Trump. Having a theater is really an asset. Most downtowns now are trying to go back and bring back a theater. We have, this family has put a lot of investment in this theater, and it's a wonderful asset. It's a wonderful piece of small-town America we're very lucky to have. Again, it's the people that run excellent downtown destination businesses. They also know how to market and merchandise. These are examples for other businesses. Tenpenny Furniture has been here a long time, fairly long time, but I think it's, it's a quality business, it's a very risky, it's a tough business to be in with the big boxes. It's the simple people you meet on the street, doing a job, keeping the buildings clean and neat. This gentleman's, I've forgotten his name, interesting to talk to. Pardon?
Red Rockets.
Very good. And I think all these people add to the colorful collection of great things that we have downtown. These types of businesses, I know Glazier Days is looking to expand. It's a wonderful business, and we'll do everything we can to help them expand. Certainly having a business like Diane's Dallas is nice. I would hope that, a little more progressive, I don't know how the business is hoping, hopefully, but it's a great business to have. Village Bakery is a mainstay. Every downtown needs to have a classic bakery. This is a great business. This is a growing business. This is also really a destination business for the area. This is a growing business. Third month, that's a positive. The barbershop, whoops, let's go, well, I'm not going to go back, I don't want to screw this up, I don't want to show you the barbershop. But again, it's a classic business, because I think we're not looking for the neat and tidy, perfect, everything retail. I think we want to be a full-service downtown. So while the core may be retail-focused, perhaps in one block, in either direction from Lake and Lafayette, I think it's accommodating all these wonderful businesses and services and organizations somewhere in our downtown. But it's, it's trying to be more strategic with the location, which we can do. So again, it's celebrating those that are leaving, but this, you know, I think this has been an important business in our past, and celebrating it, it's a wonderful thing. And it is sad that we're moving beyond this business, but I think that site will be a development site. But it's important that we celebrate, and we heard tonight, the recognition by the historical society. And I have one other thing quickly in my report that I'll talk about with this church. Again, good businesses to work off of, good people running these businesses. And again, the people that are welcoming when you go in, and I know that Carly is there, and it's a very comfortable place. And their business in the last three months, I'll tell you, is increasing daily. You go in there in the morning, it wasn't always the case, when I was at the county, and I would stop and I wonder, "How do they make it?" But the businesses is definitely expanding, and it's, it's packed in the mornings until about 10:30. It's a good thing. Families, I see a lot of families downtown. I wish we had more to offer for them. We're seeing more, a lot of families downtown. And owners, owners that care, owners that are getting involved, getting on our DDA board. It's something for all people. And people that really expand the downtown, in the case of the Christmas House. But still, people look at that as if it were downtown. And service businesses like the photography studios, things like that are important as well. People, again, Cory, as we continue to see where that project's going. Self-Lion's Cycle, again, it's a little more out just at the fringe of the downtown, but it's an important business for this community. Lake Street Tavern, Sidewalk Cafes, destination businesses again. The quilt shop is a wonderful store. Wonderful merchandising inside, something we can all be proud of. Speaking of visual merchandising, those are the things that are lessons for all the other businesses. Of course, this is inside the quilt shop. It's a pleasant place to be. I don't care if you're male, female, whatever. I enjoy fabric, my wife works with fabric, and I think it's, it's a very inviting store to be in. Window displays, I think we have a number that we can point to that are pleasant. And window displays is an area that certainly more stores need to, need to work with. Because it's that 24/7 invitation to see what a store offers. And it makes it interesting when you come out of a, a food or, or bar establishment, and you can stretch your evening and go to a window shop. This is the inside of Carl Sash. What an incredibly great visual presentation. And these are the stores, again, we need to have more of. Events, just those that I've witnessed myself. The Lake Street Cruisin', I think is a wonderful event for this community. Diane remarked that the first time she stayed open in several years, and she, get this, she was amazed at how well she did by being open, that many people went in the store and she had one of her best nights out. First time. Good for you Diane.
Three solved.
So again, the events are important. I think we're looking at all the events, seeing what works, what don't. And I know that I'm going to be presenting a program and ideas for different events, a calendar where we have gaps in events, changes that I think are important for events. Of course, Blues Brews and Rotz, it's a great event, adds variety to what's going on in downtown. Parades, important. If we're the classic downtown, we have to accommodate the parades, and certainly we do. And I applaud you for still holding on to these community traditions. Extremely, extremely important for our downtowns. Master Plan, almost done here. Master Plan, I think I've worked for 35-plus years, and I think you have a very good master plan. And I hope we can get it formally adopted now that the mapping was your last hurdle, the mapping that the county has to provide to your consultant. And I think it's a very good document. I think you've done a wonderful job, so I have to go. So basically, you're a downtown management organization, the DDA. We're working to build their capacity right now, to make them feel good about what they do, so that they function the way a DDA should function, and that they play a role as an advisory capacity for many things, for you, for the council. And that we build that capacity, and certainly, I just completed the application for Main Street Old County as an affiliate level, and I think we'll be seeing the benefits of that program and your DDA, being the kind of DDA you can be proud of because of their involvement and things that they can do and credit for. Business-friendly, I have found in my three months here, that I think the way that the staff in City Hall addresses people when they come in is you're in the top percentile of any community. All those people, when they come into this building, are treated with extreme respect. And there are some that must be difficult, but they give extreme respect. And I will tell you that your frontline, your staff, when people come in the door, are excellent. And that's huge for business friend. I will also say that your, your policies, and now you're talking about these permits tonight, and the fees and everything, all your fee structure, extremely business friendly. And even though it's tough as a consultant or as a, as a code enforcement official, I think they're very professional. And I think that's all business friendly. Someone has to hold the line, a lot of time went into your zoning ordinances and your master plans. And to enforce that, and to take this community moving forward to be a quality community, that's all business friendly. And I think you are by far, you stand heads and above many other communities that are business friendly. So in spite of the past, I would say now is in the last couple of years, from my perspective, you know, we're forgetting the past. Moving forward, I think you have a very good understanding of how to be business friendly. Lastly, really the positives, certainly all of your city departments, your city... Lastly, really, the positives, certainly all of your city departments, your city staff, boards and commissions, codes and ordinances, enforcing those, customer service, I really think, excuse me, that you are a city that cares, and it's an exciting place to work with in my position. So I see all these positives coming together, not only for the downtown, which is really what these observations are about, but your downtown really sets the tone, it's the catalyst for economic development in the whole community, it's the front door. So I, I think that you, you really are doing a good job, we all are, creating an environment, putting together all the pieces, and in spite of some issues that we'll talk about as we see whatever direction the hotel takes, other issues, we are never gonna give up, because there's too many, there are too many wonderful, great things that we will get past any adversity that might be thrown our way. I'm very positive that we're moving with downtown to economic development in this community, because I know that future is very good. So, thank you, that's it for that. Where you get the lights, I just have a couple items to bring you up to date on. I thought it was important just to get those positives out there, because really, in some communities, they don't have as many building blocks as you have, believe it or not. Couple other items, I'm now in discussion with several retail businesses, and I'll give you kind of a rundown, two small boutique upscale restaurants, there's a new fresh food concept. Now, this is not the upscale major restaurant that we're still looking for, and, by the way, on September 20th, Oakland County begins the market analysis for restaurant and retail. We should have that within two weeks. So by the first part of October, we should have a market analysis for restaurant and retail, that will let Lynn and I go to Grand Rapids and meet with that group, the Cruz and Muir people will look at it, and we can take that forward. But, and that'll help, these two small boutique restaurants that are looking at 1,000 to 1,500 square feet each, two gourmet kitchen stores have, are, we are in discussion with them, two wine bars, one wine and cheese store, which is a franchise operation, but a small-town-oriented franchise operation, there's one in Farmington right now, actually, they're from, not Manistee, I've forgotten the town, it's in M-Town, but it's a very good franchise, a wine and cheese shop. And then we've got a wine and gourmet cooking school looking at a location as well. We're looking at non-retail business relocations to free up more space. We don't have really enough space for these retailers that are looking now, but we are working with building owners that are upgrading their buildings, knowing that we will have to relocate some current tenants that are not retail, and so we're gonna do everything we can to keep those businesses in this community in new locations, but replace them with retail. So we're working on that. We're working with Michigan Downtown Association to protect and preserve our DDA tax increment financing, it's under the gun in Lansing. There'll be some reporting changes that are gonna come out of the state legislature this fall. Then next year, they're gonna be looking at attacking the whole idea of DDAs and TIF. But I think our membership, we are members of the Michigan Downtown Association, I'm currently the board chair, they have hired a lobbyist, so on their dime, we're gonna, we're gonna win this battle, we're gonna keep our downtown development authorities and tax increment financing, in spite of what my dear friends at the county feel. We are gonna be meeting with Leon Bonner and his nephew next week, have the contractor information in to proceed with painting the green building, and I don't, thank you for the text, one of the upstairs windows, there was another B&amp;E in the building, so access is an issue there. But I do believe that Leon and his nephew are gonna move forward to paint the building. And three of the businesses that have approached me are having dialogue right now with Leon's nephew, so he's gonna have to white box and do the building, the interior improvements. If he can get them done quick enough, he may attract one of these. I've prepared, I know a couple council meetings ago, you mentioned the need for certificates to recognize positive accomplishments or investment by local businesses. Lynn and I are working on criteria, so that we are fair to everybody, and that's just not willy-nilly, but I've prepared a certificates, and I don't wanna make a big deal out of them until we have the criteria, but certainly we'll be looking for nominations from, by anyone that you think is deserving. But there would be one that would be citywide, which would be primarily, citywide, signed by the mayor. I think in the DDA, it would be signed by both the mayor and the DDA board chair, kind of a dual thing within the DDA, which is common in other cities. So I think once we get the criteria, I'd like to be able to follow through on, I forget which council person, maybe several of you described the need for that, and we have some very worthy businesses that should receive one of these. Lastly, well, two things, I lied, two last things. We are working on a downtown business retention and recruitment strategy, I think maybe in your packet you either received a listing of the components, I'm about half-done with the narrative, and I hope to have that done in October, I'm working with the DDA on a business retention and recruitment strategy. And again, the building blocks are what we just saw to make that successful. Last item is that, right now, interestingly, there are three property owners, which are affecting five different historic buildings downtown, that are looking at making improvements. Right now, the owner of the Lake Street Tavern really would, would like to understand what all the tax incentives are, he's taking a wait-and-see attitude, he wants to maximize everything possible, so he is not in any rush, for any reason. He, he wants to plan his project so that he could do it in the spring, and we're talking the two Lake Street Tavern buildings and the Taekwondo building, and he wants to do a complete facade restoration of the top floor, and then the Taekwondo building would really have a, more or less, a complete restoration, but the Lake Street Tavern should just be the second floor. Going back to the original cornice, which is missing on part of that, going back to the original window openings, the Pullum Window Company, Charlie Pullum, has expressed an interest of providing, beating, in Charlie's words, beating all costs just to show off his product in town, which is great. The Christmas, interestingly, so, Richard Rao, who owns those three buildings, the Christmas House, and then Andrea Phillips is also looking at historic designation, state and/or national registered designation, and they're all looking at incentives, of course, the Christmas House wouldn't be eligible as a residence, but the Phillips are planning some major restorations, and, and very interested in historic designation. So I think with what we'll see progressing, I'm gonna defer the hotel discussion to Lynn, and then I'll be available for a discussion, but I think what, what we are seeing is great interest in what historic designation can do for people financially. But for the hotel discussion, I'll defer to Lynn and I'll be available for.
I'll say thanks, Bob, though, for all this, this has really been good.
Thank you. An update. I didn't throw her under the bus, I told her I was gonna defer to her first.
He did. On the hotel project, we are meeting on Wednesday evening with the owners, their architect, hopefully their engineer as well, the city staff, Chief Kennedy, Bob Martin, our city planner, our city engineer, our building official, we're having our second pre-application meeting. They have stated that they will have preliminary drawings for us at that time, they want an accelerated timeframe, as they would like to have, to begin structural construction, whether it is a renovation or a rebuild of the property before the end of the year, which is why we are doing everything we can to accommodate them, including meeting after hours. I think this will be a very productive meeting, we are still hopeful that they will do a reconstruction based on all of the incentives and a realization of the cost of a rebuild versus the reconstruction with the incentive dollars, but we won't know the final answer on that until we meet with them this week. But we do understand that it is their project, they're private property owners, and that as much as we can guide them, it is their business decision to make in terms of how they choose to move forward with the project.
I had a couple, did you?
No, I was gonna ask something, but go ahead.
On the hotel, here's my only comment. They were a destination place because they had a historical value to the city. And people came to the hotel because it had this wonderful history, whether it, in terms of how it developed, how it became a restaurant, how it became a bar, its time period in terms of horses, hotel, whatever. And I think that was part of the attraction, as many people that I've spoken to have said, and, and I'm gonna make the comparison with the New Hudson Inn. I don't know how successful the New Hudson Inn would have been if they did not do a historical renovation. That is something that I think needs to be seriously considered, because the New Hudson Inn is fabulous, they did an incredible job over there, their business is through the roof, because they made an effort to preserve a historical landmark in that community, and I have to applaud all of them. I was there at the opening, had an opportunity to meet with them, and, and, you know, Jay was there, and he did a lot of the woodwork, you know, a lot, a lot of the craftsmen from Lang Township were actively involved in turning that around. So if you take the South Lion Hotel and turn it into something that it is not, I, I wonder what the consumer base is gonna be, because that consumer base is already drifting. I mean, I've already been to three places, I know where that consumer base is going, and to draw that consumer base back, I really think they need to think hard about doing what they need to do to bring the historical value back to that location. I'm being as diplomatic as I can, because if they just put a four-by-four wall with a front door where I can walk in and walk out, and throw a couple signs in like they used to have in the hotel, they've become nothing different, and they've become a local bar, a local hangout, without any destination attraction at all. I'm, that's all I'm gonna say.
Do, John and I, go ahead. Are we gonna make sure that we're all on the same page for this meeting on Wednesday? I know there was some concerns.
We have already had that conversation and made sure we're all on the same page.
Okay, 'cause I don't want that, something, I don't wanna present something and then find out that...
Somebody didn't get the memo.
Exactly, so, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I, I know, I, just a couple comments that are positive at this point. I, I just want you to know that there were two objectives that council assigned, is not to lose the restaurant and save the hotel, if at all possible. And I would agree with much of what you said, Maggie, but we are, we are certainly hoping to keep the investment here, and we should know, as Lynn said, but I want you to know that I've probably worked harder on this project than anything else over the last three months, and I think we're able to stay up on our work plan before we wanted to take downtown management and economic development over the last three months. But I would tell you about 80% of my time, and I don't care about, I'm not a nine-to-five kinda guy, or eight-thirty-to-five, I will tell you that there probably, definitely were many, many evenings and weekends, just to make this all happen, because that's what I felt this community needed. And so, all of the financial incentives at the local, county, state, and national levels were explored and presented and provided to the hotel owners. The timing, we met and we gave them an optimal timeframe, that would be depending on their schedules. We even, if, if an issue was, certainly the gap between insurance and the total cost of the project was significant, because to get the building in its size, to get the restored building back, which was basically a brick facade with all-new interior, this did not include a new basement, was gonna be a $1.8 to $2 million project. If it were to be removed completely, I do not understand how a new building in the same footprint, with a complete basement, with all the code improvements, could ever be built for a million dollars. I think, as Lynn has said, we will know in the next couple days with the quality drawings that are required of architect and engineer, the sticker shop, unless, hopefully, the building is still standing, I think the sticker shop will say that maybe they wanna come back and discuss the incentives, because we're not sure where that's going right now, although we have a pretty good hunch, we'll just keep that to ourselves. So, but I, I want you to know that we even accommodated the shortfall in the, you know, the employee, the management having no funds available, definitely, I mean, if an owner suddenly has a family and the, the insurance was a shortfall, we were even able to answer that question, it's called a developer fee. And all of the financial institutions, all of the financial incentives identified the fact that a person, whoever the family chose, could have been identified as the developer representative, and could have taken upwards to 10% maximum of the total project cost, and could have very shortly started to receive a salary, which could have been, for a $2 million building anywhere, I mean, one, a $2 million building would have been $100,000 to $200,000 to cover the fact that their insurance was short. So, I would hope that there's still consideration for the historic building, we don't know the final answer, we will know this week. Yeah, this is America, and people can say, we appreciate all of the input, but we're gonna go and take our private investment to something different. So I just want you to know that we've gone as far, and again, this community stepped up, you're even, there were just nods at the head, we had no formal tax abatement policies, but it looked, we were doing everything possible to accommodate that, and I just want you to know, if other decisions are made, I can't think of any other community that could have done a better package. I will guarantee you, there is no other community in Oakland County that could have given them a better package than we could have given them, just want you to know.
Are we looking at any tax abatement for them?
They really wouldn't qualify with the new bill, Mary.
No, but let's say that the city decided to abate their taxes during the period, just go ahead and abate the taxes.
That would be a legal question, because the state of Michigan, it's, the two laws are state statutes, that would be a sin question.
That's a tax abatement issue, but I'm, I'm just trying to brainstorm here, to give them every tool for Wednesday, and if there was any way to abate the property taxes for 18 months until whatever, and then, and then they start, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking out, are there any economic loans or anything that could be granted with very, very low interest rates? I mean, the Fed today pretty much has telegraphed they're not gonna raise interest rates, so we can look for maybe another quarter of low-interest rates, I mean, short-term interest rates, or...
To qualify, you know, there's a lot of personal and business information that goes into qualifying, receiving loans, and so, I think, pretty much all of the incentives are off the table with new construction, except the Oakland County Business Finance Corporation and SBA loans for owner-occupied businesses would still be available, and that's a blended rate to beat a bank rate, and they, they really should look at that. I bet at the end of the day... I bet at the end of the day, if they're not, if, if they choose, and I don't know if this is the case, if they choose not to divulge any financial information, then they wouldn't qualify for that either. But we'll see. That is one, that is really the only thing with the new building that I think they do qualify, is the Oakland County Business Finance Corporation.
Well, here's the thing we don't know. Is, like any business that you have, that business had a stream of income. And you don't know how important that stream of income was to the total financial picture of this particular family and business. So from their standpoint, there may be some incentive for them to quickly move so that that stream of income can continue. Because they may not have the financial resources to hold out for another eighteen months.
Well, that's why that developer fee was proposed to them. Because that provides them a stream of income to...
During construction.
During construction.
Who, who pays that?
Well, um, you can front-end load it in the bridge loan. You know, you have to pay the contractor during the process, but, and, and it requires a really experienced CPA. And we, we, they met in Pontiac. I purposely had a developer that's been through two of these projects. We met in Pontiac, just not quite two weeks ago. And we had that developer explain how all these programs come together. And yes, it is very confusing, it's very complex. But I, I, and then he, Kyle Westburg with West Construction in Pontiac, offered at no cost to be there for them, to consult with their CPA. And so, where were they going with that? They, there was a lot of information available for them on how to utilize the bridge loan, that's where I was going, and how they could have taken a salary to cover the shortfall. That the insurance is no longer paying. And so they could have, whoever they designated, it was Cory or it was Chris, they could have received a salary very soon. That was all tied to the fee.
Thanks, Bob.
Yeah, thank you. We need to remain hopeful. I mean, the, obviously, this is, we've got an awful lot of skin in trying to make sure that this works out, so. I just hope that you're very compelling on Wednesday.
I, I really, at this point, I, I, I think it would be remiss if I didn't say that I am very surprised that there's any doubt to not try to receive nine-hundred thousand dollars in assistance. And I guess that's, we won't know the yes or no on that until this meeting.
There's some very strange dynamics going on in the group, the ownership group. So it's, it's kinda puzzling how they wouldn't come to the right conclusion. But there's forces that seem to be getting more swayed than what they really should be, so.
Bob, one question, that development fee that you were talking about, the investment that's available, that would go to who's designated for that particular...
The, the ownership would have to designate that person.
Can they take that money, then, all, I mean, this is, I'm thinking like Maggie, you're, you know, when they go to the meeting, can that money also, then, at that point, if they decide to bring in a couple of people that were key working there during the last few years, can they also be on that?
I don't know the legality of that beyond one person. I know that usually a developer fee is... It's legal, because it's done in major development projects. Pretty much anything over a million dollars, it's common. But I don't know the ins and outs of who, or if it could be more than one person.
Are, are you saying that they did not have business interruption insurance?
I believe they have said that they did not have enough coverage for a long enough period of time. They've made those statements.
Bob.
I have a, top two other points for downtown discussion, if that's okay, John? Thank you. And I'll make it quick, because I know we still have some more agenda items. Actually, it's for, for Bob, Mr. Martin. I noticed that the, or Lynn, either or. I noticed that the bricks outside of Diane's Dollhouse, they seem to be sinking a little bit, right? I was wondering if we can get those fixed and maybe get an ETA?
Pavers?
Yeah, brick pavers.
Okay, I wasn't aware of it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not horrendous, but it's enough where I think somebody could...
We'll take a look.
Thank you, Bob, I appreciate it.
Not in the street you're speaking?
No, no, on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Yep, next to the tree, you'll see it. So thank you very much on that. And then, my next point, and I apologize, I'm taking in all this information about the hotel, so. I wanted to also congratulate Tracy Hill of Tracy Hill Photography. She has moved her studio from right next to Norm's about, to above the Coral Slash. I attended an event on Friday, her grand opening. It was just wonderful, there was so much support from the community. A lot of friends, a lot of family members, and people just fans of her, of her business. So it's nice to see our businesses downtown succeed and do well and really grow. And anytime we see that happening, I like to promote it and always highlight it. And I saw Councilmember Kurt Swiles there as well, so. Yeah, so congratulations to Tracy Hill, thank you.
Manager's report.
Okay, um, we'll take care of the hard part first. Right now, I am the city's representative on two boards. One is the SLARA Board of Directors, the other is the Center for Active Aging. I've been asked by two to have the city council appoint an alternate representative for the rare occasions when board meetings conflict with other meetings that I need to attend, when these meetings are rescheduled and a conflict exists with other meetings, or when I'm otherwise unable to attend. An example of that is, this month's meeting is on the Fourth Wednesday, and I will be out of town at a conference for that. It is my recommendation that the council appoint as my alternate, Bob Donahue. He and I work well, he's very familiar with SLARA, and I can bring him up to date with the Center on Active Aging. It's not a situation that happens very often that I miss the meetings, but we do need to have an alternate.
I'm fine with it.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, don't have a problem.
I need an actual motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve Bob Donahue as the alternate for Lynn in the event that Lynn cannot attend either the SLARA meeting or the...
For Active Aging.
I'm sorry, the Center for...
Active Aging.
Active Aging.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Um, as we already talked, Bob and I are meeting with the hotel group for a early-stage pre-conference application meeting. So we'll let you know as soon as we know any additional information on that. Wanted to let you know, I have spoken with Ron Cook, the owner of the Knowles Development. They're hoping to have houses being built in that development soon. Most of the area has been approved for all of the required improvements that had to be done before houses could be built, but they are still waiting on final stages from HRC to be improved. They have, they still need the ASBIL drawings and to do a final walkthrough, so I anticipate that will be two to three weeks before that's done. But we do have four building permit applications waiting for approval, so as soon as everything is approved for dedication to the city, you can expect housing construction to begin there. I will tell you that the builder for the majority of the lots in the Knowles will not be Paul Elko, as had originally been expected. Ron Cooks has told me that he has sold the majority of the lots to the Consano builders.
I know.
They are familiar with South Lion. They've built other houses and in other subdivisions in our city. They're well-known for being a good-quality builder. So that will be moving forward, wanted to let the council know about that. If you've had a chance to read the weekly report this week, you'll note that Chief Collins has met with the school district. They approached me in early August about a school resource officer and the potential of the city splitting the cost of that. They have already gone to the Lion Township Board and gotten approval to split the cost of putting an Oakland County Sheriff's Deputy at South Lion East. Now they are working with Chief Collins to identify the costs and bring it in front of the school board for then coming to the city council to see about South Lion providing a school resource officer at South Lion High School. The last Pump Confest meeting is this week. They are still in need of volunteers, so if anyone is interested in volunteering, that is the weekend of the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth of September. You can go to southlionpumpconfest.com and look for the volunteer button, and they would be happy to have you volunteer. And if you're planning on participating in the parade, applications are due this Friday, the sixteenth. So make sure you get your application in. Don't forget that our farmer's market is continuing through October, so make sure you get a chance to check out the fall produce and artisans booths every Saturday. Want to make sure that we congratulate South Lion Dental for reaching their fortieth anniversary this week. There will be an open house and ribbon cutting this Wednesday at 2:00 PM. So if any of the council members have an opportunity to show up, I think that would be a great opportunity for showing your support for a business that's been in our community for that long. Want to remind you that I will not be at the next council meeting on the twenty-sixth, as that is when I will be in attendance at the ICMA Conference in Kansas City. I will be out of the office the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth, but available via email and phone. But if you are gonna make a phone call, please text beforehand, because if I'm in an educational session, I will not be able to answer the phone during that. And the last thing I will let Bob talk to you about, he has a project going on over in the Historic Village from, this week, with volunteers from Lowe's.
On tomorrow and Wednesday, Lowe's Department Store is gonna be coming in, and we're gonna be doing some sweat equity with their people, and we're replacing all of the, the Hitching Post fence, if you will, around the Witch's Head area. And there're gonna be paintings, some of the white picket fence at the school and the wellhouse. They're supplying all of the manpower, or most of it, and the paint and wood.
Wow.
Wow.
Been working with them for about two months, and it's gonna finally come to fruition this week.
Good job.
Good. Very cool.
Just wanna add a point on the new builders coming into Knowles of South Lion. I know them, not personally, well, I kinda do. It's Nick Consano and it's Nick Mansonelli, Nick and Nick. And if anybody wants to look at their housing project, you can go to Lion Township. You can look at Hornbrook, out there in Eleven Mile. On Pontiac Trail South is Lion Trail, they did that. I think they finished off Maple Creek, which is there on Nine Mile. They tend to be a little bit on the high-end side, so I'm gonna be kinda curious. I may stop over there and see if, if Nick is over there, and just find out if the price point is changing now with the homes, which would be great, because that, that would then bring the, the price of the homes up. They, they do a nice job, they do a nice job. So I just wanna say that. I'm glad I have, I have tremendous confidence in Nick and Nick, that's for sure.
And that's all I have this evening.
Thanks, Lynn. Also comments, Lynn?
Yesterday, the fire department did a great job with that nine-eleven tribute with the flag and the aerial unit on Pontiac Trail. There was a spectacular photo opportunity, that's for certain. Beautiful day, and I had, I'd heard comments from people about, apparently at the firehouse, there was a gathering at, at that time as well? Is that correct?
No, we put flags of Paul Baker.
Okay.
And we went to the Brighton Memorial later that day.
Okay, yeah. Well, that, that was very, very moving, though, the, the whole notion of that big old flag hanging over the street like that was really cool to see. I wanted to thank Chief Collins for purchasing those crosswalk signs that have been helping get pedestrians across Pontiac Trail for farmer's market. That's a big step in the right direction. I'm hoping we can expand that to, I guess, more as needed. But when you get down by the Coral Slash, it was probably more at, when the hotel was up and running, it was probably more needed then. But still, all those four corners over by, what, what's it called? Craft Works or something, you know? I mean, being able to get across these things with some assistance from a sign that gives legal responsibility to the people that have, that are driving, they have to, to yield to pedestrians in those crosswalks. I think that's just, just a natural step in the right direction. I was kinda curious, do you know anything about the Heinonen and their new sign? Heinonen Engineering.
They have a permit for the new sign. It's a sort of free-form sign. It was submitted for a permit and was granted one.
Somebody on planning was, was concerned there, there looked to be some type of LED component that he had worries about, I guess, so. I've only seen the thing mounted on the fascia, so I don't, and I haven't had a chance to really inspect it, but...
We have lit signs all over town, so LED would be very energy-efficient, so...
Yeah, well, he's not talking about just the, the lamping of it. It's some kind of a detail that he thought was going to end up being sort of a detriment. I, I had attended the Bridgewater on, from Parks and Rec last weekend, and that was, or two weekends ago, I guess it is now. That was an awful lot of fun. We had a little spritzing in the beginning, and then it got very nice, and a lot of real nice folks, and it was a great day for walking around. The planning commission meetings, we need to get minutes, and I'd, I'd love to see their agendas ahead of schedule rather than all this after-the-fact stuff. So I, I don't know who we need to talk to to try to get all that coordinated, but... And I don't have any idea if anyone else has an interest in it, but I'm very interested in, in understanding in real time what they're reviewing, so. And I was wondering, the, I had heard anecdotally about the, the Doughty proposal with Parks and Rec, and it was rather sketchy as far as what was submitted. Is there going to be a follow-up with some further detail that they can review? Or is this, this thing tonight was the conclusion of...
My understanding is the final design is supposed to be going to the Parks and Rec Committee. They have a meeting this week, but they are not sure they're going to have a quorum, but they're still planning on meeting with Mr. Moore, if he's available, to discuss his final designs. When he presented to them in August, he did not have final designs for the plaque or the bench. He had picked one out off of the internet that they had some questions about. They asked him to get together with the, Bob Martin and the DPW to see if he could pick a bench that was more in keeping with the standard benches in McCatty Park, but that could still be made into a memorial bench, so that it was more similar. But that is still moving forward.
Okay, they're, but they still intend to provide final sketches and stuff?
As far as I know, yes.
All right, that's all I had, thank you.
I will keep mine relatively brief. I just wanted to say that the ceremony honoring Dominic was, it was heartwarming, and it was actually something that was needed. I think South Lion bands together best when we group around people that we love and people that we can relate to. So I just wanted to thank South Lion as a community, that that was such an amazing ceremony. The turnout was incredible, all great things, honoring a hero from South Lion. So that was wonderful. And also, thank you, Chief, for the heads-up on Saturday about the farmer's market. I did swing by and saw the barriers, so good stuff, so, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, I wanted to start off by saying, Witch's Head Fury, Fury for a Feast was wonderful. This was a couple of weeks ago, but so many people came from our city, and then Lion Township and surrounding areas, then other people from other communities came in. And it was so nice to see, I, I was talking to people from Livonia, Royal Oak, and they said that they came to, to our city just for Fury for a Feast. And they're gonna, and they come back, so that's a lot of traffic, so, which is... traffic, so Witch's Hat certainly deserves some, a good job there. Not only that, but they, it was for a great cause, gleaners and blessings in a backpack, supporting a great cause. Speaking of blessing, speaking of blessings in a backpack, I believe I mentioned this before, but now they're expanded to all of the elementary schools, feeding the needy children in all of the schools, which is just terrific. And they will be having a packing session where they're, where they're doing their first packing of the backpacks, Wednesday, September 14th, at Bartlett Elementary, and that's at 12:30 PM. So I just want to congratulate them again on their hard work. Also, as a reminder, Pumpkin Fest is coming up, as Lynn mentioned, thank you, on the 24th, and look forward to seeing everybody at Pumpkin Fest and partaking in the parade. And that same night is also, the same night that the Beer Tent will be open, Brown's is also having their celebration, so I will be at the Brown's celebration, and I look forward to seeing so many good, good friends and seeing everybody downtown. Next, I wanted to speak about the benches and the ice rink in general at, near McCady Park, the play area. I noticed, Bob, that the benches are up, and then it looks like all the concrete is poured, so it's just great progress. So I think you guys did a terrific job, and that was a great idea, so Bob, thank you for proposing that to us.
I cannot say enough about my Department of Public Works. Two gentlemen, in particular Trevor Placid, John Race designed it, Ron Brock, the foreman over there.
Yep.
These guys kicked it. Terrific job.
Yeah, and I saw John's updates and
Remember, it's in the parking lot, that if it gets cold enough, we're going to flood.
Yep, that's wonderful.
Not an ice rink, that's going to be a parking lot. It's a parking lot, it's going to be an ice rink.
Dual purpose.
You got it.
That's wonderful. Yeah, and I saw John's, John's notes and everything, and he was really keeping the community informed, so I really appreciate that. So if you could tell them, I said, "Thank you, I appreciate that." Thank you. Also, it, this, over this past weekend, there was a little mini-vehicle tour around, around our city of pre-1915 vehicles. I don't know exactly all the years, but I was told that most of them are before 1915, and they, they came from as far as Lansing and surrounding communities, and they came into, and they stopped at Brown's, and then they parked in the Witch's Hat, and it just really says something about South Lion, that of all places that they chose, our city, you know? So it's really special, so I was happy to see that. Next, wanted to talk about the safe routes to school, as we noticed the light is up and functional at Marjorie Ann Street and across from Big B Coffee. It's really helpful, so I heard some, I want to talk about this, this for just a few seconds. You know, I've heard some feedback that the minority of people, but some people are, they say that it may slow down the traffic, but I will remind that you can't really put a price tag on safety, and not to mention, some of the bus drivers and the parents coming out of Sayre Elementary, they're impacted by turning, making a left on that, which can often be difficult, so that really helps everybody, so I think overall it's a great project. Lynn, what's the next steps for safe routes?
The next steps, we are in the process of finalizing the drawings, submitting grade inspection will be happening in the next couple of months. The goal is for MDOT to bid the project by February of '17, so that construction can begin on all of the rest of the project as soon as school, that's out in June.
So that would include additional sidewalks?
Yeah, it'll be all those sidewalk improvements, the drainage improvements along Marjorie Ann, the crosswalk improvements at 9 Mile and Pontiac Trail, everything else that's part of the grant, as well as the educational portion that the school has involved.
Okay, so I think that's wonderful. My last point is, and this is just a little detail that kind of stood in my mind, and I'm looking at, Chief, the lights at the police station, the blue lights, I thought that's a great touch, so.
Thank you.
At night, you know, especially everything that's going on these days with law enforcement to really put it out there and say, "This is who we are." I think it was, it was a nice classy touch, so thank you for that. For that, good night, thank you.
Well, thank you. I just want to mention, too, that I was at the football field dedication, and I want to mention that the organizers of that did a really nice job. They invited, and the VFW was the, one of the organizers of that, and the master of ceremonies, if you will. And the school also had speakers, Melissa Baker, superintendent spoke. They all did a nice job of organizing it. The veterans groups from around the community and surrounding communities were invited to come out and bring their flags and support the honor guard, and it was, it was a very, very moving ceremony, so my thanks is to the organizers of that, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I agree with everything Harvey said. It was a very moving ceremony, and it just shows what this community can do, and a situation like that was beautiful. The, the hours for the light, when are, what are the hours for the light at?
It is a traditional school, like just, school light, which is just like at South Lion High School and South Lion East, so it is, it constantly flashes.
Right.
Unless there is someone on Marjorie Ann waiting to turn.
Gotcha.
Smart light.
Yeah, because I was just, I mean, I do that route every day when I'm dropping off my son, I was always curious when the light actually would
Yeah, it's, it's what's called a school light.
Okay.
So it's like the light at the parking lot at the high school.
Okay. And then, is there any way we could extend the use of those crosswalk signs to the bike trail on 9 Mile, just on the weekends at least? I just, having, I mean, I go down that road every day, and on the weekends, it is difficult. I mean, people end up, I know I've been bringing this up, but that bike trail on 9 Mile, it's hard to cross, especially with all the traffic going back and forth, since that's only basically straight route to the freeway. It's just extremely, and I see people waiting there all the time.
Especially when they have kids.
Yeah, it's just, and they're afraid to go, because, yeah, they may make it, but their three little kids on bicycles may not make it behind them, or vice versa. So is there any way we can do something just to slow traffic down, just on the weekends at least, so that people know that when there are people coming across, just that little sign is actually, people sit there and say, "Yeah, it's state law, you have to stop."
Those, those signs may not be appropriate application.
Or something, something similar.
Or they're, because they're so portable, and they're also so expensive, those signs are about $350 each, so unless you're in a high-traffic area, or the police are constantly standing there watching those signs.
Somebody might just run them off.
My fear would be they'd become a souvenir in someone's garage or dorm room.
What we can, what we can do is we can look into discussions with the road commission about the cost for putting what's called a HOX signal in there, that is a
Yeah, if we can do that, I mean, that would really, I know I've mentioned this before, but I think it's just getting worse, because more and more people, especially when it's nice outside and not 200 degrees outside, are using the bicycle trail, and they just sit there waiting for traffic to slow down or stop for them, and I mean, it's a long period of waits, so I'm just curious if we can do that. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Maggie.
Well, I had an opportunity over the weekend on Saturday to attend the University of Michigan game. Not much of a football game, but what was, the reason I did want to go to the game was because of the memorial service that they had for 9/11. It was absolutely phenomenal, and I kind of want to thank everyone at the University of Michigan that took the time to put on probably the most fabulous 9/11 memory that I've seen, at least in my lifetime. The American flag that was stretched across that football field, it literally covered the football field. It was a breezy day at the time it happened, so the flag was furling in the wind. It was just absolutely very, very moving, and not to mention the flyover. While I was at the game, I also ran into a lot of South Lion people. Some of them I didn't even know, but they, they recognized me, came up and thanked me for the work that council is doing, and the real kudos goes to Bob Donahue. Word has gotten out, obviously, to Main Street of South Lion, that there is this new person that is helping the downtown with the assistance of Lynn, and I can't tell you, between the two of you, I've got, I must have received 10 compliments from people that were just very, very happy and felt that the city was finally, finally moving forward and getting into the 21st century, so those were great comments. They came from all ranges of ages, from adults to teenage kids that were 20, 22, that attended the University of Michigan, and I knew their parents and ran into them, so I just wanted to bring that good news back home from Ann Arbor.
Thank you.
Also, I had an opportunity to be at Tracy Hill's invite for her open house, and it was phenomenal to be able to walk up those stairs, hear jazz playing upstairs, and I almost felt like I was in a New York loft. It was phenomenal. It really, really, Tracy just had a great crowd there, she had just a great spread of hors d'oeuvres, I met some just incredible people, individuals that I haven't met before in town, and once again, the topic came to the downtown area, and Tracy clearly is, is going to be a part of it, and I'm just, I'm so happy for her. But more importantly was the photograph that you had of her daughter, which I had an opportunity to meet, which, if you haven't seen her daughter's photograph, and if you want to know how good Tracy is, although her daughter is extremely attractive, are those pictures that make her look like Audrey Hepburn. They're just phenomenal photographs, so I want to, Tracy, welcome to the downtown officially, and looking forward to you staying a long time. Also, would like to talk, I had an opportunity to be at Lion Township's meeting a couple weeks ago, two weeks ago, and I just want to compliment the Lion Township firefighters that were there in the audience, that were there listening to the presentation regarding the possible merger, and I just want to thank those firemen for their professional conduct during that meeting. They were absolutely outstanding, and they brought a lot of pride to their profession, so Lion Township, you've got some great firefighters, and I just want to make sure that there, all of them were appropriately thanked for their very, very cordial behavior, very appropriate behavior in that meeting. Also, Feast and Fury, Bob, I just wanted to let you know, the little tidbit I sort of caught was there, I think Ryan and Aaron are trying to work on a draw, a craft draw next year, Beer Craft Draw, and maybe the city might be interested in supporting some economic incentives that would include, you know, Three Monk, Drought House over in New Hudson, maybe between the two, between you and Tina, put together a nice package, because i-if this goes through, this will be huge. This will be huge. So maybe some advertising for the event, kick in for the event, maybe work with them, and I think they're trying to work on it for next year. I also am going to be at Bartlett on September 14th, and I want to thank all the ladies that are putting together on these knapsacks. I spend a lot of time in nonprofit organizations, so I know what dedicating your time is when there's nobody there to thank you, so I'm going to be there if anything. I may not get 700 knapsacks packed, but I'm sure going to be there and thank every one of those individuals that's there taking time out of their day to improve a child's life that doesn't necessarily have what a lot of us have in this community. And last is Ed's retirement party. You know, we see this flyer all over town, I don't have mine autographed yet, but I'm going to get it autographed by Ed, I just got to find the right time. And I can't tell you how much Ed Brown has given this community. I think between now and his last pour, which I believe is August 8th, everybody should go down there and purchase, you know, at least a couple more dinners, a couple more lunches. Get down there and thank Ed for everything that he's done for this community. Just don't sit there at a party when it's going to be crowded with a ton of people. Go down, spend some special moments with Ed Brown. And I do want to say, and I'm going to say just on a tangent, is, and I want to be careful how I say it, is I was a real proponent of McCady Park, and I'm even more of a proponent now to ensure that any development that comes into McCady Park has an integrated sense to it, that we don't destroy the historical nature of where McCady Park came from. And the reason I'm saying that is we lost the hotel, and we're losing Ed Brown's. We're running out of historical places in our town, so I think we need to hang on to what we have, so I just wanted to let all my friends know, the downtown area, and those around in the subdivisions, I'm going to continue to fight for the, for the integrity of McCady Park. Good night, and I want to thank everybody. Good night, everyone. Have a great week, remember Pumpkin Fest is coming up, let's support it, and I wish you all a really, really well week.
Well, the advantage of going last is everybody says pretty much what I want to say, Maggie, that was all well said, all that, that was very well said. One thing I do want to say, what Glenn said, is that flag, Chief, has got so many shares on social media, and I've had so many people from the east side up north that have seen it, and were just absolutely blown away with the compassion the city showed. That flag made a huge impact on that day, especially to a lot of families, so commendable, very big time for this. I know it wasn't, it was not selfishness at all, it was no, it was all just, "Let's do this," and it was perfect. And everything else? You guys have all said pretty much what I wanted to say. Well, thank you.
We have to
Yeah.
Have a roll call for the inter闭 session after we adjourn.
Well, just, just a point of order, does Lynn want in a closed session, or does she want an open?
Yes.
Do you want a closed, okay.
Okay. Pursuant to Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act, to consider a periodic, periodic personal evaluation of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, if the name person requests a closed hearing, the city manager evaluation. Our city manager has requested that, so is the motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call. That's it.
Evans?
Yes.
Kadakis?
Yes.
Rizzi?
Yes.
Dallas?
Yes.
Waddell?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Fritswab?
Yes.